Welcome, everybody. Today is the Wednesday, July 22, 2020, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of Picken County. And in our room here, we have Commissioner Patty Clapper and myself. And on the phone, or on the Zoom call, we have Commissioners Greg Poshman and George Newman. Kelly McNicholas Curry is trying to get on. She will be joining us shortly, we hope. And first of all, I know that we have at least one addition to the agenda.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. We do have one addition to the agenda. I may turn to John Ely, who I believe has this item title.
Okay. Hi, Kelly. Yes, Steve, I would like to request the board add as an item to the agenda, an emergency ordinance. It is the same that was emailed to the board this morning. I would suggest that it be added as Item 5A.
My dinner came a motion to add that item as Number 5A.
So can I?
And do you want to read the title?
I have the title. It's "An Emergency Ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners Authorizing the Picken County Sheriff to Impose and Rescind a Ban on Open Fires and a Prohibition on the Sale Use and Possession of All Fireworks in Unincorporated Picken County at Any Time During 2020." And so I would add it underneath the other emergency ordinance about the intergovernmental agreement for Coronavirus Relief Fund.
Okay, is there a second?
I seconded. Greg did the first.
Greg and Patty, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that item is added. And is that all, John?
Yes.
Okay. Now is the time for public comments. The public may call in on the number that I believe is, it's listed on our agenda and also grassroots, I believe, has it posted on their screen. So we have, looks like right now, two phone numbers. The phone number ending in 3799. You have three minutes, you can talk right now.
All right. My name is Sandy Mulcahy. I want to comment on Kelly's recent statement that we have had several hearings. What is the definition of a hearing? It is a public meeting where evidence is presented and opportunity is provided for politicians to ask questions and rebuttal is then offered. I stood with Lee in front of City Market in the courthouse and gathered over 2,000 signatures asking for a hearing. The only hearing that has taken place was Judge Seldon's hearing to appoint a receiver for APCHA's Tom Smith. And that person turned out to be a friend of Smith's for 30 years. That relationship was not disclosed to the judge, and Judge Seldon decided that it didn't look good. No kidding. That's corruption. Kelly, that is our one and only hearing. Why will APCHA not have a work session on our serious allegations that APCHA and the government broke the law multiple times? It appears there is fear of the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. The, let's see here, the number ending in 8797? You may speak now.
This is Sean Cox, and after I speak, Lee Mulcahy would like to speak.
Okay, Sean.
I first would like to read a letter to the Aspen Daily News dated July 20, 2020. It says, "Dear editor, I figure we are all tired of hearing about this Mulcahy standoff. I don't know the dude, may not even like him if I did, but the man is fighting for his home and his mom. What kind of feeling are we supposed to take away from that? A man defends his home, bottom line, and gee, he defends his mom next. What else is a guy supposed to do? You know what? A person has to be at least half crazy to even try to make a home here. Who gets to pick? Who gets to live in the Rockies? I guess APCHA thinks they are the ones. No, they are not the ones. Their job is to open up the door, that's all, and that is all. If a person qualifies for affordable housing, all that should mean is they live here full time, use the property, and are able to build their own home and live there. Being personable or not is not listed in the requirements. Picken County does not have a dog in the game. We all do. Drop the 1,500 hours per year rule. It's totally difficult to prove exactly how we managed to stay here and why. Get real." So that was from Janet. So this is my comment. APCHA is famous for harassing homeowners and tenants, which they all technically are tenants due to the APCHA rules in the deed, which give deed holders a false sense of security at the time of purchase. There is a constant flow of citizens who live in APCHA approaching Lee, calling Lee, and bending his ear about the overreach, abuse, and injustice of APCHA. Now, these people don't have the blood, sweat, and tears in their property that Lee has. It's more personal in Lee's case than many who have ever dealt with APCHA. So the majority just leave quietly. But as you are seeing across the country, people will only take so much abuse before the people's outrage starts to spill into the streets. I hope APCHA will soften its stance with Lee and follow the new rules for fines set up, not run rickshaw over them and the citizens they were meant to protect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean. Lee, you can start any time.
My name is Lee. Sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Lee.
Yes, sir. My name is Lee Mulcahy, and y'all know I'm grateful for many, many things, especially for having a pistol as a mom who gave me a backbone. Kelly said that it is laughable that I claim that the government, APCHA, and you guys address everything in executive session. And I don't claim that. Most things are addressed in executive session. And she never wants to discuss, or APCHA never wants to discuss, their lawyer doesn't want to discuss, the fact that Rick Head sits in on these executive sessions without recusing himself, and I've been in litigation with SCICO, I'm currently in litigation with SCICO, to hold all of the times that Rick has sat in and not recused himself were the times when he should have at the conflict of interest. That's unfortunate, but it's typical of APCHA. Also, when Rick refuses to answer if he still remains employed by SCICO. The other thing Kelly said, she said it was because of the unstoppable slew of lawsuits. Now, I realize, Kelly, you're from New York City and work for the United Nations, good for you. But just hold on a New York second. You, the government, you know, you ran unimposed, but you know, you guys.
Lee, excuse me for cutting in. Lee, excuse me for cutting in. Could you address your statement to the issues and not to one of the individual commissioners, please?
Well, she made these statements and then didn't allow me to comment on them. So how do I do that?
Well, you can talk about the comment, but it's bordering on just attacking Kelly instead of talking about the issue. And talk about the issues that she talked about.
Lee, the public comment is set up to address the entire board, not individual commissioners.
Yes, sir. Well, did I mention that I climbed in the space suit to spray insulation before APCHA, who Kelly represents, because George is leaving, he didn't even attend the last meeting, before you would approve the occupancy of my house? You know who held up the CO on the house? APCHA did. Now, I don't know why they have anything to do with the safety of the house, the community development. That was approved a long time before. And you know what Cindy told me? She said, "We don't want to approve this CO because if we let you in, we will not get you out." That's exactly what the deputy director told me. Now, I'm glad Kelly brought up lawsuits, okay? Because notably, APCHA's lack of respect for Mulcahy's constitutional rights, and this is in the opening brief of the Court of Appeals, which we are in now, the lack of respect for Mulcahy's constitutional rights doesn't end with this case specifically in a separate lawsuit. Judge Neely of the Picken County District Court recently, I'm just noting that's not Judge Seldon, right, who was your assistant county attorney, recently found that APCHA's silencing of Mulcahy at his public comment sessions violated Mulcahy's First Amendment rights. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we're in Aspen, Colorado. The year is 2020, and when you have an organization that controls 3,000 units in a town of a population of 6,788, that is silencing citizens, that's concerning. And we all need to look at these allegations, and that's the reason that we're all here, is to plead with you to give us a work session, whether in APCHA, whether the city council, whether you guys. You guys say, "Well, we just did it in executive session." Well, that's secret. You know, that doesn't help anyone. And I just want to point out that Houston, the fourth largest city in the United States, does not allow secret executive sessions, right? So what happens in that? Well, it encourages lawsuits, and it just pads Tom Smith's back pocket. And one of the county commissioners recently stated in public that she felt that no sensible, any sensible person will sign a recall petition against her. Now, notwithstanding the arrogance of that statement, right, she's right.
Okay, Lee, could you wrap up your comments, please? Your time's up.
Oh, yes, sir, because of fear. Thank you for the time. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Lee. The number ending in 1519, you can have the phone now.
Oh, hi, everyone. This is Toni Cronfor calling, and I hope everyone is doing well. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Toni.
Okay, thank you. What I wanted to talk about today was the airport with mandatory six-foot social distancing in this COVID times, because I think we just need to get a heads up on it. As you know, last winter before COVID, the airport saw more passengers waiting outside the terminal to get into the ticket boarding area due to the airport's more stringent compliance with the TSA, FAA space requirements. And now that COVID is here with mandatory six-foot distancing, I'm just wondering what is Picken County's roadmap for restarting aviation with social distancing requirements? As you know, we don't have a new terminal in sight. If we did, that would have satisfied pre-COVID spatial distancing requirements, but now with COVID, we really, I really believe we need to rethink what we're doing out at the airport. The latest guidelines for biosafety for air transport has two sections in it, and I will send the report, I just got ahold of it just about half an hour ago, that it states that two things have to have happen. One, the airlines need to revise their current boarding process to ensure physical distancing of three to six feet. And then the airports will need to redesign gate areas, and governments will need to adapt any rules and regulations to make that happen. They also are recommending thermal smart cameras to be installed to scan the temperature of multiple passengers rapidly and unobscusively. And then also the passenger flow through, that that needs to adhere to the six-foot social distancing. So I just anticipate, if we get our airlines kicked back up again in this winter, we've got almost, you know, a full load of passengers coming back in, that we're going to have people waiting to get into the terminal, clear out to Lot A, which is where the short-term parking area is. So I just wanted to put that on your plate right now before we get blindsided by it, because the airlines are definitely crucial to our economy and for people keeping their paychecks coming in. So I just wanted to put that on your plate, and maybe I might have about 30 seconds left, but I just wanted to tell you the difficulty that I had trying to access this meeting. When I called in, just as the meeting got started, it hung up, and then I had to call a different number. And then while I'm on the phone, there's a playback. I also was trying to watch it on TV and listen in my headphones, and you get like double conversations. And then the third thing is, I really wanted to watch the meeting, but on the screen, there's more about the call-in numbers for the public just being posted up there. So maybe the TV could put that down like at the right-hand side corner, so we can actually watch the meeting as it goes on. But I just wanted to thank you very much, and I just wanted to give you a head start on that.
Okay, thank you, Toni, for calling our attention to the technical issues today. Never having.
You're welcome, Steve.
Never having phoned in myself on that number. I don't know what it's like, so thank you. And thanks for the ideas on the airport social distancing, too.
Thank you. And I will send a copy of this report to Rich Engelhardt and to John Peacock, and also to the Picken County Health Board, so that it can be put in what's known as a parking lot to get started on it.
Okay, thank you very much for calling in.
You're welcome. Thanks, and stay safe, everyone. Thanks for all your hard work, also. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye, Toni. Next, we have the number ending in 5548.
Hi, yes, that's me, Diane Rutgers.
Can you talk more loudly, please?
Okay, is that better?
Yes, that's better.
Okay. My name is Diane Rutgers, and I'm calling in about, pretty much, the refuse and trash along Highway 82 has gotten so much worse over the last five years or so, and I spend a lot of time taking care of it myself, and I really think the county, we need to sort of put something in place that might get either people to participate, or a schedule, or have the people that actually advertise really do their job, because it doesn't appear that that's happening. There's a lot of signage on 82. I live down at Twining Flats Road, and I pretty much take care of the spot. I try to, anyway, from Woody Creek Canyon to Twining Flats. And I think a lot of it is from the contracted trash trucks and pickup delivery, you know, pickup trash people, that they hit a very high speed between the Snow Mountain Flight and the refuse center. I think they're going about 70, generally, from what I can tell. And it always sort of gets bad on Thursday, Friday of the week. And it's, you know, lots, not such great stuff that gets thrown. It's a lot of plastic insulation, fiberglass insulation, which is nasty. And then, you know, there's been a tire out there for a month and a half on the other side. The middle median is extremely bad up toward town. It's just unsightly, and considering what we spend money on here and how much my property taxes are now, I think it's time to try to, you know, clean up. If we're not going to make it look any better, just at least keep it clean. So those are my comments.
Okay, Diane, thank you for your comments. Also, thank you for your letter and photographs you sent. And we did begin discussing this yesterday at our work session, and we will be continuing the discussion. So thank you for bringing the issue up.
I also thought that possibly, you know, I don't know if you're going to get many people interested in being on the highway with the amount of traffic. It's not the safest thing, but it is doable. It's just, I don't know if there's a schedule that should be done. I don't know if Picken County inmates are allowed to do it. I don't really know what, you know, all the different choices are for states that have this issue. But I think everybody can agree that Aspen's trash on the highways has gotten, you know, pretty bad. It's very unsightly, too. And the way that roads are set up with mediums in the middle, that's an impossible task for just the citizen people to do. I think it has to be supervised or something, I don't know. Okay, well, keep me posted.
Okay, thank you for your call, Diane. We appreciate it.
You're so welcome. Thank you. Bye-bye.
So, let's see. We had Butch. Now, I don't know who Butch is. Butch was on there first, I think. Butch, do you wish to make public comment? Okay, maybe Butch is away from the phone. Let's go to Kent.
Can you hear me?
Butch, is this Butch?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
This is Butch. Regarding, I'm.
Could you give us your full name, Butch?
Yeah, Roger William Orbin II.
Thank you.
AKA Butch. So I live at 14 Eddie Lane. I'm not sure that we're on this conversation yet about Emma Fields.
That's going to be later in the meeting. That will actually be the last, our last thing on the agenda. So if you could, you know, I don't know when it will be. We have a lot of other things on the agenda before we get to the Emma Fields issue. And if you could call back in then, I know that there will be a lot of people wishing to make comments on that.
But I have a question on that. It's a first reading. Are we taking public comment on Emma Fields today? Butch, I asked you to call in for the Emma Fields, but I just realized it's our first reading, and we usually take public comment on second reading. So, Steve, it's up to you. You're chairman.
Yeah, that's true. That's true, Patty. Butch, maybe you should just make your comments now, and I think it will be in a couple of weeks when we're actually doing the public hearing on the Emma Fields.
Can I ask for clarification on that? Because there's also a resolution associated with that application that wouldn't ordinarily be a one-read. I think the resolution will get.
It is scheduled today for a public hearing.
Scheduled for a public hearing today?
Yeah, on the agenda.
Okay, so Butch, if you could call in in a little while, or just stay on the line and listen to our meeting, you could do that, too. Thank you.
I can do that. Thank you.
Now, I have a question.
Okay.
So if the resolution is of one read, don't we have to continue that? Because the ordinance adopting the amendments to the code are first read except for second reading, public hearing. So I'm not sure, can we pass the resolution without doing the second reading on the ordinance itself?
I think we would have to pass the ordinance first.
So we'd have to continue, we could hear the resolution granting special review approval, but continue that to the second reading so we could pass the ordinance, right?
That's right. And it, but it is listed as a public hearing today, so I think if there are public comments today, we will take them today as well as at the continuation date. Okay, going to the number 0072. Do you wish to make public comments?
We just hear the resolution granting special review approval, but continue that.
Could you talk louder?
I think they're just having a discussion.
Well, that's something else, a feedback thing, I think.
There are public comments today, we will take them today as well as at the continuation date.
Okay, maybe discontinue that one. Let's go to Kent. You have a, we don't have the last four of your number. Kent, do you wish to speak about something that's not on our other agenda?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I was.
Could you give us your full name, Kent?
Yeah, Kent Schuler, S-C-H-U-L-E-R.
Okay, thank you, Kent.
Yeah, I'm making a comment on the distillery, but I, now that I understand what you just said, it's later for the comments after the presentation or something like that, right?
Yes, that's right.
So I'd rather wait, I want to hear more about what is going on before I make comments.
Yeah, that would be good. That's a good decision. So we'll look forward to hearing you later, Kent.
Thank you.
Okay, the number ending in 0072?
Yes, my comments are about Emma, too. Should I wait till later?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we'll watch the video, then call in later?
Yes, that would be good. And we'll take a break before we go into the Emma Fields. So we'll be taking a 10-minute break, probably. And that will be announced, that'll give you plenty of time to phone in.
Okay, all right. I will call back later then. Thank you.
Okay. I think everyone else is here for presentations. Elizabeth McCracken, is she a staff person? I'm not sure. That name is familiar to me. Elizabeth McCracken, are you here? Do you want to make public comment right now, or are you here to present on another item?
No, I'm just, I was here for the Emma Fields.
Okay, okay. I think that's where I had seen your name, was in the letters. So we'll hear you later then.
Thank you.
So I don't see any other new numbers on here. So let's move on. We'll close the public comment period and go to commissioner comments. Any commissioners have comments you wish to make? Kelly?
It's nice to be flip-flopped in seats today, Steve, working from home this week. So I do just want to clarify something that Mrs. Mulcahy said. With regards to a hearing, Merriam-Webster defines a hearing as an opportunity to present one's case, which the Mulcahy's have done in repetitive, numerous law briefs that they have submitted in their multiple, multitude support cases. So that's what I was referring to. And also, just want to let you know, Lee Mulcahy has filed formal papers to recall me, so I'm getting it to seriousness that it's due, and filing my response, and all of that will be finalized this week, though I'm very proud of my record, and, you know, we'll defend it for, you know, for what I have to do. So that's happening, and I wanted you to hear that all from me. And then on a more pleasant note, I am very excited that Major League Baseball is starting their season and came to an agreement back up today. And, you know, my parents are from the Bronx, and so I'm born and bred Yankees fan, but I am from New Jersey. And I've lived in Colorado for the longest I've lived anywhere in my whole life. This is what I call home. But, yeah, so good luck to the Bombers, and I'm swooning over Dr. Fauci throwing out the first pitch tomorrow. And also, good luck to the Redskins, which are my newly adopted team, who are playing tonight against the Rangers in summer camp.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. And I'm a Brooklyn Dodgers fan myself, so, just so you know. Great Poshman.
Hi, thank you. Good to see you all here.
Hi, thank you. Good to see you all here, everybody smiling. This is good. I just wanted to highlight something I saw in the news. It was forwarded by one of our Board of Health members, Dr. Tom Kirk. And the AMA, Journal of American Medicine, published something that came through the New York Times. It says that researchers have conducted coronavirus antibody testing in 10 different cities and states in the U.S. And they've concluded that the number of people with coronavirus is anywhere from two to 13 times higher than the reported rates for those regions. The results suggest that large numbers of people who do not have symptoms or do not seek medical care may have kept the virus circulating in their communities. And this underscores the necessity of wearing masks. All I can say is, you know, if you care about the community, you care about welfare, whether you're visiting or you're a local, put on the mask, okay? That's my public service message for the day. I've got mine here, although there is nobody within about a mile of me where I am. I've got my mask at the ready. When I see someone, I'll be able to put it on. And thank you, Steve, for wearing yours. I know you're all safe there. But, you know, it's time that masks just become part of our everyday life. And I'd rather go out without my pants than my mask. If I ever do that, there'll be photographs, and I'll be sure to share those, too. Thanks.
Okay, George, do you have any comments? Okay, Patty?
Yeah, I'll keep it brief because we have a very long agenda before us. I just got back from a trip to California to visit my, my 95-year-old mother. And it was quite the experience flying. I have to tell people, flying was great. I was impressed, both with our airport, DIA, Orange County, masks. People don't seem to understand what that means. But it, the planes were immaculate, and there was as much distance as you could imagine on the two long flights that I had. So that experience was much more pleasant than I thought it was going to be. But being in Southern California, people just don't get it. And, and masks are mandated. People don't wear them. They don't believe in social distancing. Their numbers, as we've seen, are really going up significantly throughout the state. But I just want to ask people with, with what Greg said. You know, I know people don't feel they need to wear them at all times hiking and outdoors, but please have a mask at hand, ready, so that if you do come into a circumstance where it might be a little tight, or a few too many people, or people who aren't wearing masks, it's easier for you to slip your mask on and then to slip it off. Keep it at, at ready, either hooked on your arm, around your neck. That's why the ones that you can keep around your neck are really handy. I think we'll see a significant drop in numbers if people abide by that. We, the worst, I mean, I think the last thing we want is to have to start shutting down like they're having to do in many places in California. It's really hurting their businesses, probably even more than the first time around because now they don't have access to paycheck protection funds. Unemployment, as of July 31st, the $600 allotment will no longer be provided. So unemployment compensation is going to be dropping back down. So we're going to see big economic hits if we have to start shutting down. So please, you know, it's not, I don't think it's too much to ask of people who live here, people who visit here. Just be respectful of others, protect yourself, your friends, your family, your neighbors, and respect this community. We've worked really hard to allow us to start to slowly reopen. And we, we, we just ask that people who, who are in our community respect that and keeps, and stay safe. So, on the other hand, enjoy it. It's already July. I can't believe it. It's beautiful outside. Get out as much as you can. Take advantage of the fresh air, whether it be behind your mask or not. And just again, just stay safe. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you. And that reminds me, this weekend would have been Mountain Fair, which they're doing sort of a drive-through Mountain Fair in Carbondale. I will miss getting to serve on the green team.
I always see you there.
Which I always do, and I won't get to do that this year, so I'm kind of sad about that. But I think they're going to have a drum circle with people drumming from their yards and different musicians driving around town on flatbeds.
There are some other events, I think, that are people doing.
It'll be a Carbondale event of a new type this year. Also, I'd like to-
You know, Steve?
Yes?
On that topic, there is also an event, there's a parade. I believe it's a naked bicycle parade down in Carbondale, is what I heard about.
Are the bikes naked?
I've asked them to wear masks. They should wear masks, at the very least.
I would, I would second that.
So Greg, are we going to be looking for you there? Do we have pictures?
So, and also, I'd like to wish my Uncle Marty a happy 100th birthday, which is tomorrow. Now, Marty, he lives in Marin County. He is, was instrumental in the preservation of Bollinas Lagoon, parts of Point Reyes National Seashore, Tamalas Bay, different parts of Marin County. He's a noted conservationist in, in the Bay Area. He was a student of Edgar Wayburn, who is Will Roush's grandfather. And they were both very notable in their doing as medical doctors and also doing conservation work on a pretty major scale. So tomorrow is his 100th birthday, and they're going to have a big Zoom meeting from the University of California in Berkeley Public Health Center, where he was a student. And so that's, that'll, that's a pretty neat event. I will be on that Zoom call tomorrow. So we need to get on to our agenda. First item, minutes of the July 8th meeting. And that's our only consent item.
I have a question.
Motion to approve? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, can I, can I have a question? I, I did not attend this meeting, but I did read the minutes. And on page four, maybe somebody can clarify this. It's under the Emma Fields LLC. And it says, Commissioner Postman moved to continue second reading of the ordinance and the resolution as written, except for second reading July 22nd. But on today's agenda, which is the 22nd, it's first reading.
So it should say first reading instead of second reading.
So you just continued the Emma Caucus meeting from the 8th of July. Was it the 8th to today?
Good catch, Patty.
Okay, so, this whole second first reading on Emma, Emma Fields has been confusing, so, all right. So we just need to clarify that in the minutes.
Okay, so then Greg, would you amend your motion to include that amendment?
I amend my, my motion to approve the minutes with the, with the correction of the continuation of the first reading of Emma Fields.
Okay.
Perfect.
Second, any discussion? Hold on, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up, we have, these are individual consideration items, first readings, except for public hearing. Now, it says on August 26th, but there's only the one item. It's an ordinance accepting a conservation easement from the Aspen Consolidated Sanitation District. And Ryan Neely, you want to, I see you're on the screen there. Go ahead, Ry.
Can you hear me all right, Steve?
Yes. Go ahead, Ry.
All right, Steve, I had some problems here. So as the agenda title suggests, this is an ordinance, the Board of County Commissioners of Colorado, accepting a conservation easement from the Aspen Consolidated Sanitation District. As this board will recall, it granted a land use approval, approval to construct a utility-scale solar project on property owned by the Aspen Consolidated Sanitation District across from the Rush Creek Intercept Lot. One of the conditions of approval in that land use approval was that the Aspen Consolidated Sanitation District grant Pitkin County a perpetual conservation easement that essentially covered an area on the ACSD property from the top of the rim of the Roaring Fork Gorge down to the river. That conservation easement was requested initially by the Open Space and Trails Board of Trustees, with advice from staff, OST staff. And the importance of that conservation easement was to provide wildlife connectivity between conserved lands, either owned in fee by the county or covered by existing conservation easements along the side of the gorge, providing access to the river. What's in front of the board right now is a little bit unique. As you know, the Home Rule Charter requires the Board of County Commissioners to accept property interest, which a conservation easement is a property interest, to accept conservation easements through an ordinance action. The unique aspect of this particular request is that subsequent to the BOCC granting approval, the land use approval, the Aspen Consolidated Sanitation District raised an issue of whether they actually had the authority to do that. The, I haven't been able to get a very good answer from the ACSD as to why they don't think they can grant an easement. Has something to do with the EPA, the Federal Environmental Protection Agency, and the fact that the site was initially purchased with a grant, at least a partial grant, from the EPA? In any event, the EPA doesn't hold a property interest that I'm aware of in the ACSD property, but the ACSD Board believes that it needs some additional approval from the EPA to grant a perpetual easement. The sanitation district is competent in their ability to grant an easement that has a limited term on it, as opposed to perpetual. In this circumstance, the term that they are confident that they can grant runs contemporaneously with the grant, or I'm sorry, with the special use approval for the lifetime of the solar project. Just for a frame of reference, the county does not hold any conservation easements of any kind that have a limited term. Every conservation easement in Pitkin County has a perpetual term. And now there's, I guess it's debatable as to the value of a conservation easement with a limited term. But it is undoubtedly understood that conservation easements would have a perpetual term. That being said, the public benefit that was expressed from this, or the potential public benefit from this project that the board recognized and expressed during the land use approvals, in my opinion, the county attorney's office's opinion, warrants the consideration of accepting a lesser conservation easement if the ability to grant a perpetual easement is outside of the control of the ACSD and this board. So in short, what I'm saying is, it seems silly to derail an entire project with an express public good if both the BOCC and the ACSD can't do anything to effectuate a perpetual easement on the project. So in order to grant the ordinance that is in front of you today, you will need to have the desire to accept a perpetual easement, as committed to by ACSD, but also have a willingness to accept a lesser easement, an easement that runs contemporaneous with the special review approval for the solar project. And although that may be a less desirable outcome, that would be, that is the question that is in front of the board today. My recommendation is that the board approve this document on first reading, approve the ordinance on first reading, and set public hearing on this for August 26th. The reality of the circumstance is that a response from the EPA as to whether it is possible to grant a perpetual easement or not is likely many months down the road. To effectuate the condition of approval in the land use resolution granting special review to build the solar project, the parties, the BOCC and the ACSD, have agreed to enter into an escrow agreement by which a perpetual conservation easement form and a non-perpetual conservation easement form are being held in escrow pending a response from the Environmental Protection Agency. As I said, this is likely many months out. The escrow agreement, by entering into the escrow agreement, it will allow the project to move forward to permitting and then even potentially to construction before getting a response from the EPA. So I just want it to be very clear that accepting this ordinance today, or approving this ordinance today and what's in front of you will allow the project to move forward even though it isn't in the most, the condition of approval hasn't been satisfied as completely written in the resolution. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, questions from the board? Patty?
Yeah, first, and I think Steve's has the same question. Why are we, if this is to pass today, why would we be continuing it to the 26th and not to the 12th?
Uh, well, you can do it to the 12th. I don't know if I'm going to have the capacity to turn it over by the 12th. But I can certainly make an effort to do that if you'd like.
No, if, if it's okay with the Aspen Consolidated, Consolidated Sand, that we do the 26th, the 12th agenda is getting a little stacked. So I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem if there's some justification to moving it to the 26th. My other question would be, you answered the one, is why is EPA approval needed? And that's an uncertainty that we're trying to resolve. The third question I would have is, if a perpetual conservation easement was part of our approval and we're changing that, can we do that without going through another process to amend our original approval?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. That was a good answer. All right, thank you.
Concise. We'll do Greg and then Kelly.
Great, thanks. Good questions, Patty. And thanks for that quick answer, Ry. It's possible, okay. Now, moving on, is there a precedent? Apparently, there's no precedent in Pitkin County for doing this. But do we have evidence that it's possible with the EPA and that we're actually going to get somewhere? The only times I can think of any negotiations or activities with the EPA seem to have dragged on for years and threw lots of dollars. And so I'm just wondering, does the EPA have a mechanism for doing this that we can at least hold out some hope that this can be done?
Good question, Greg. My understanding of how this works with the EPA and the land use application record includes a statement from the EPA whereby it granted support for the, the solar project itself. It was silent with respect to the conservation easement aspect of it. From my discussions with the ACSD and their representatives and their attorney, is they make the same type of request to the EPA that they did with respect to getting initial approval for the solar project itself, the infrastructure on the ground. As far as timing of that goes, it could be a long time. It could be a year, for sure. My understanding is that the approval for the, or the investment in the project is available now and may not be available in the future. I would also note that the Pitkin County Land Use Code requires- I would also note that the Pitts County Land Use Code requires special review approval, I'm sorry, requires the use associated with special review approval to commence within one year of the granting, of the adoption of the resolution granting the special review approval. So, under the land use code, unless the applicant were to come back in before the resolution expired, and it's hard to believe that we're coming up on that date, but that was a 2019 resolution, I can't remember the exact date, but it was late in 2019, maybe October or November. Essentially, if they don't start, get their permits and start construction this year, they're going to be back in for an entire new special review permitting process. The mechanism that has been set up right now is designed to address the uncertainty of whether they'll be able to grant an easement in perpetuity, but at the same time allow them to move the project forward. The decision to accept or what kind of easement interest the Board is willing to accept falls entirely within your function as the steward's and proprietary role of accepting easements on behalf of the county. So, in some, to some level, you can separate that from the land use approval as long as you're satisfied with the property interest that you're getting. And you can make a determination that that satisfies the condition in the approval, the land use approval, to be clear.
So, Ry, if, so we're going to submit and hold in escrow two applications, one with the conservation easement, one without, and we'll wait to see what the EPA says. Next is, there an automatic, a default to the conservation easement if the EPA approves? We don't have to go through this again with ASD or anyone else if the EPA approves.
That's a good clarification, Greg. So what, what is in front of, what is in front of the Board today, and this is just a slight clarification to what you said, is the escrow agreement will attach two forms of a conservation easement, one with a perpetual term, one with a term that runs contemporaneous with the special review approval. This ordinance accepts both of those, basically, one or the other. Says we will accept conservation easement as specified in BOCC resolution, the land use resolution, and we're willing to accept one with a perpetual term, and if the EPA denies that, we'll go ahead and record the one with a non-perpetual term. So, as far as a default goes, it will not need to come back in front of you again to accept one form or the other form. We can go ahead and record one or the other. Thirty years from now, when the special review approval is running out for the solar project, there would potentially be an opportunity to revisit a request for an extension of that special review approval and revisit additional consideration or grants from ACSD for that special review use or extension of that. Does that answer your question?
Okay. Kelly, go ahead.
Thank you. I have, Kelly, an easy question and maybe a little bit of a longer question. So, quickly, is the escrow agreement a separate document? And do we have to approve that at all?
Well, I have the form of the agreement, Kelly. It's set out for a signature from the BOCC chair. The document does not need to be approved through an ordinance or anything like that, but I was not going to have it executed until I got a conceptual agreement from you all on moving this forward today.
And then I just want to summarize, going back to our discussions about the special use review approval, why I remember us wanting this conservation easement in the first place, just to put a little more context around it, I guess, for me. So, okay, so even though we've agreed that we want this solar farm use on the property, we've also identified conservation values associated with the property that we won't want to be undermined in any associated use with the solar farm or additional future use for this, of the consolidated sanitation district. And so that's why we asked them to enter into this conservation easement in the first place, even though the special use approval has nothing to do with conservation. Is that a correct summary for the purpose of this request?
That is my recollection, Kelly. The, the project itself is of a scale that essentially blocks the ability of wildlife to trans, to cross the property. There's a large concern around it to protect the installation. But being from my recollection of the OST Board and then this Board, and this was supported by Jonathan Losky, their wildlife biologist, was that in that particular area, these steep hillsides where, that go down to the river, provided corridors for wildlife to move back and forth from the upper area up by the moor property and stuff like that, down to the river into the gorge, particularly at times when it's a low water year or in the winter when they're down in there. That was my recollection about why Board felt it was important to preserve that particular area of the property, even though it is, it is a very difficult area of the property to develop, no doubt. It's steep hills, things like that. The practicality of placing development on that portion of the property is pretty low, but, you know, it could happen. So that was the concept behind it that I recall.
And so in the event that we are unable to obtain, you know, or the sanitation district is unable to obtain EPA's agreement for a perpetual easement, and ordinarily, our conservation easements are perpetual, you know, nothing precludes us from pursuing a future conservation easement with the district once the project's been decommissioned or any first year use is discussed after 25 years.
Right. So, you know, my inclination is, and I'm not an expert in a project like this, although I've learned a lot about it, but it's an expensive project to build, 25 years is a period of time where I think the technology at this point is deemed viable. My inclination is that the technology will be even better 25 years from now, and hopefully we're still using solar-type renewable energy at that point, and if anything, the project may be more efficient. And I can't imagine them tearing down the whole thing after 25 years, but maybe they do. But yes, when they come in, in the future to effectuate additional approvals for the property, that would be an opportunity to discuss either increasing the term of or looking at other options for the property.
Okay, thank you.
George, do you have any questions? Okay. And my one question really has to do with the date of August 26th or August 12th for the second reading on this. This project, I mean, it was last fall that we approved the project. It's been in the works and just has had a series of roadblocks doing, dealing with easements along for burying the power line and whatnot all that time since. I would put this one at the front of the queue for August 12th, and if we had to continue another item to make more, make more time. But I suspect also that the August 12th meeting appears to be really full, but it might, I think, at least one item might move faster than we had anticipated, and we, we could do it on August 12th. But you said you had some turnaround, you know, you still had some red line stuff on the document, and obviously, you didn't have it in the 100% complete and ready to go form.
Yeah, I think one thing that's important to understand, Steve, and maybe I didn't make this clear enough, is that this Board does not need to take a final action on this to actually allow them to start going to permit. So, if they satisfy the other conditions of approval in the resolution, which they haven't done yet, they're really, really close. I just reviewed their final site plan and activity envelope, they're waiting to get that executed, they just got community development some numbers on a re-vegetation bond amount today, they're really close. The community development department could bump them to permitting, I would say realistically, next week if they, if we can get this escrow agreement finalized. So whether you go on the 12th or the 26th, they could potentially be already into permitting. But if it's a priority to get this on the agenda for the 12th, you guys just tell me and I'll move some stuff around and make it happen. That's, that's how I work.
Greg?
The impression I get is that Ry could use the time for the 26th and it doesn't matter to the applicant, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept this resolution. We vote for adopting, let's see, where am I, an ordinance accepting a conservation easement for the Aspen Consolidated Sanitation District with the consideration for the two escrow, the escrow conservation easements for August 26th.
I'll second it.
And that, Greg, then, is with the, the second reading and public hearing on August 26th, is that correct? That's what you suggested?
I'm, yes, according to the.
Okay, okay. Okay, it's moved by Greg, seconded by George. Any further discussion?
I just want to thank Ry. Ry, I know you put in a huge amount of effort and time in this, and it's not been easy, and I want to thank you for persevering and helping both the Consolidated Sand District and the BOCC to move forward. So, thanks, Ry.
Yeah, likewise, I would echo that. Also, thanks to Bruce Matherley from the Sanitation District. I know he has been pushing for this for a long time. I think he'll be glad to have everything finalized. So, I'll bring, I'll call the question. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, five to nothing in favor. Thank you, Ry.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to individual consideration item, second reading. This is a public hearing, a resolution of the Board adopting the 2020 Elected Officials' Transportation Committee strategic plan. And we have David Pesnachak here in the room, and he will present this. Hi, David.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I'm Dave Pesnachak, Regional Transportation Administrator. As you may recall, on July 7th, the Board of County Commissioners reviewed the Elected Officials Transportation Committee strategic plan, and that was adopted on first reading at that special meeting unanimously. Also, the Town of Snowmass Village Town Council also unanimously adopted it on July 6th, and the City of Aspen City Council adopted it on July 13th. Both of those councils will be adopting it by resolution in a similar fashion. So the request here today is to complete the process of approving it by resolution. Just so you know, the, at the July 16th EOTC meeting, the Compliment Valley Transportation Plan was also unanimously adopted. That will be coming before you for first reading on August 12th and second reading on August 26th. In your packets, there is a short memo, there's a copy of the final version of the strategic plan, and there's also the resolution of approval.
George?
Oh, thanks. David, was there any changes at the EOTC meeting from our approval?
On the strategic plan, there was not. So all, the City of Aspen and the Town of Snowmass Village both adopted it as a part of their preparation meeting, so there was no further discussion at the EOTC meeting on July 16th on the strategic plan.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Don't see any other questions, David. So I would entertain a motion of approval for this item?
It's a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Thank you, Patty, for reminding me. I had it in orange on here. So this is a public hearing, and I was just looking on the phone, and there is a number, let's see.
Those three numbers, those, Butch and eight seven.
Eight, seven, seven, one, is that?
He's waiting, I think, for the Emma Fields.
Oh, okay, okay, that's.
I think.
Yeah, that's for the Emma Fields also. Okay, so anyhow, if anyone wants to comment on this, you can call in right now, and we will wait a minute and see if there's anyone who wishes to make a public comment about the approval of the strategic plan for the EOTC. I thought maybe Tony Kronberg would call back, but. Okay, we're not seeing any, any new phone numbers showing up, so I'll close the public hearing on this and bring it back to the Commissioners.
I will make a motion to approve resolution adopting the 2020, is it 2020?
Twenty twenty.
I know, but it's two, two, zero.
Elected Officials' Transportation Committee strategic plan. We're going back in time.
I know.
It's supposed to be 2020.
Okay, moved by Patty, seconded by Greg. Are there any further comments from the Board? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Dave, thank you for your work.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you, David, for your hard work on this. It was well, very well-written, and I think that's why nobody made any changes to it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, we'll move to emergency ordinance and resolution with confirmatory reading on August 12th. This is an emergency resolution on behalf of the Pitts County Sheriff's Department approving a contract with the Colorado Department of Human Services Office of Behavioral Health, providing funding for jail-based behavioral services. And we have Kim Valario here.
Hello, how are you?
Welcome, it's good to see you. It's been a long time.
Yes, it has.
Since I've seen you in person.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't make, I don't frequent the jail very often.
That's a good thing. But come by anytime, we won't put you in a cell.
So, Kim, go ahead and do your presentation.
Okay. So, I don't know if you're familiar with jail-based behavioral services, or we call it JBBS. It's basically a program that, in the past, provided substance abuse programs in the jail to help inmates with those substance abuse. It has expanded also to provide mental health and MAT treatment or medication-assisted treatment. We previously were in a, they called it a catchment grant. OBH, Officer of Behavioral Health, provided funds, and we were in a catchment grant with Mesa, Garfield, Rio Blanco, I didn't get them in there, I noticed, Summit, Eagle, and us. And we had some limited funds, very limited funds compared to this opportunity to provide a licensed clinical worker to come to the jail. to provide a licensed clinical worker to come to the jail and, and provide those services. There was a, you can see in there, the Correctional Treatment Cash Fund. It was a state statute that provided additional money to provide those services in additional. So the catchment grant was breaking up and I, I noticed a typo in there too. I, I put June 30th, 2019, that actually was this year. That catchment grant broke up and everybody's gonna, was gonna do their own thing. So we were gonna have to do something anyway to keep providing these services. The, the funds available were much more considerable than what we previously had. So we put in for the, for those, for that additional funding and were awarded. It's not really a grant, but it's, it's similar. It's just money provided statutorily. There is no cost to the county. These are funds provided by the states, by the state and it gives us an opportunity to provide additional services, additional mental health, additional substance abuse treatment, along with some continuum of care and some items once they leave the facility. So that's kind of what the program is and, and we're pretty excited about being awarded the opportunity to, to accept those, those funds.
Okay. Questions for Kim from the board? Or comments, questions or comments?
You know, this is something we've, we've obviously needed in the past and we are continuing in the growing need today and tomorrow and into the future. So I think it's great. We got a little extra money and I think it's really critical to have the training and the, for the, for the, all of you who in the Sheriff's Department and those who work in the facility, but also to offer some assistance to those in need of mental health services or just in need of transitioning from our facility back into their real world, their real lives. So I think this is great and I absolutely see no reason why we should not approve this and move this forward. It is an emergency resolution and we will set it for a confirmatory public hearing on August the 12th.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Yeah, that is a motion too.
Yeah, I took that as a motion. Kelly seconds it. Further comments from the board? Kelly?
Thanks, Kim. It's nice to see you. I hope you're staying safe and well and I know that COVID is presenting new challenges to jail, which is already bit challenged. And, you know, it seems like eons ago that our board had our retreat and identified the jail procurement improvements as one of our top priorities. And, you know, I know that, I'm sure we're all eager to get back to a more normal time when we can focus on that important work. I just want to say on a personal note, you know, these programs have a very important place for me, kind of personally, because I have, in a different part of the country, very close family members who have dealt with substance abuse and have been in and out of jail related to substance abuse and mental health needs and, you know, have, have seen real benefits at per access to this type of programming in that, you know, part of the world. And so I just fully am behind and support being able to offer this type of programming so that, you know, it can give folks who really are just struggling with, with these illnesses and, and just major difficulties to try and set them up for success in their lives moving forward once their terms are finished. So thank you for encouraging this type of program in our jail and in our community. Yeah, I'm fully behind it.
Thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, because I support this also. I just wanted to ask regarding the sourcing, the, the practitioners who will come in and work with inmates and recovering people there, where do they come from? Are they, are these, is this outsourced to, you know, I'm concerned about, you know, a doctor who's far, far away and isn't really connected. How, how do you think this is gonna work?
That's a great question. So what our plan is, and I've been working with procurement, when we first went into, got, when we got the medical contract with a medical company, they had actually, I don't know the correct terminology, but as an alternative had bid mental health, the companies that had bid on that contract. So they had bid for that as well. So where we're going with it is to contract with them to provide that mental health and J B B S and then they will find the providers. They may be within this, hopefully within this community or, you know, in the valley. And, and that's, that's, that's our plan is to, and it also provides us some continuity of care just with our medical and our psychiatric and substance abuse and all that. So it's actually will be a great working system. So that's, that's where we're going, I think, if we get this approved.
Okay, yeah. I think just to follow up, I think that the concern is that it's not, it's not outsourced to a contracting company, you know, big national company that really doesn't have our particular interest at heart and maybe they're looking at the bottom line rather than the quality of care. I, I, you hear about that and I'm not suggesting it happens here, but I think it's something to be vigilant about, that the quality of care is, is very, very important and, and actual responsiveness of the provider. And I'm sure you've run up against that already and before, but just, it was just in the front of my mind when I, I hear about telemedicine and faraway doctors or, or medical, mental health practitioners. It's sure, truly be good to know who we're working with. Thanks.
You bet. Thank you. I agree with you. We want to make sure that we provide the utmost care that we can.
Okay, and I remember I think it was the Boulder Sheriff or somebody in, in Boulder had made the comment that they ran the largest mental health institution in Boulder and that was the county jail, I believe.
Sadly, that's what happened.
There's so many behavioral problems and substance abuse problems where the people end up in jail. So I think it's absolutely terrific that we have this money available and that we're able to access it. So congratulations on that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So, uh, let's see, we need to-
We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. We haven't voted yet, so. Uh, there are no further comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Thanks, Kim.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, Kim.
You bet. Thank you.
So next, item number five is an emergency resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for coronavirus relief fund, local government distribution in Picken County. And John Peacock, you're on the hot seat now.
Great, thank you, Steve. And this is an item that the board has discussed before in work session. By way of background for the public, back on, in March, on March 27th, Congress adopted the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, also known as the CARES Act, which established $150 billion coronavirus relief fund. Colorado received $1.6 billion in that funding. However, under the federal legislation, only local, only local governments with a population of 500,000 or more were guaranteed a per capita share of CARES Act funding and distribution of that CARES Act funding to smaller communities was left to the discretion of states. Back in May, Governor Polis issued an executive order directing expenditure of CARES Act funding, which included $275 million be made available to local governments with populations under 500,000. The Department of Local Affairs is responsible for distributing that $275 million. Of the $275 million, two, just over $219 million was earmarked for distribution to counties and municipalities. And the, the total amount to be split between counties and municipalities was based on county population. So DOLA earmarked $1,524,180 for Picken County, based on that per capita earmark. But DOLA required counties and municipalities to collaborate on a request for funding and, and come to agreement. And so that is what's in front of you with this intergovernmental agreement. We had previously discussed this, as had the councils of Aspen, Snowmass and Basalt for the purposes of opting into the grant program, basically making the, the application. And that, this I G A reflects that agreement. The reason you have an emergency resolution in front of you to adopt this I G A is DOLA requires a fully executed document before they will distribute the funds, which will be available at, at the end of this month. Snowmass was the last municipality who considered the, the I G A on Monday. The I G A has been approved by all municipalities. The I G A divides the CARES Act funding that was allocated to Picken County, 55% coming to the county with 45% going to municipalities, divided on a per capita basis of, of their respective populations within Picken County. So under the I G A, Picken County will receive $833,050. You may recall when we did our budget supplemental earlier, we had estimated $700,000 in 2020 and another $100,000 in 2021 in the CARES Act funding. So this would slightly exceed that in, in 2020. Aspen would receive $454,782, Snowmass Village would receive $170,903 and Basalt would receive $59,914. The CARES Act funding is restricted in terms of what it can be spent on. It, it does need to be related to necessary expenditures incurred due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Were not accounted for in the most recent budget approved as of March 27th, 2020 and were incurred during the period beginning March 1st, 2020 and ending on December 30th, 2020. So we do need to have qualifying expenditures, which frankly, all organizations already do, for, for reimbursement. And so this I G A will formalize the agreement that, that we submitted earlier as part of our CARES Act application and will allow us to start drawing down those funds.
Patty?
Yeah, I just have a question. I think this is great, John. Thank you for your efforts. I knew you could prove me wrong and you did get this money, so I'm, I'm happy to say that. The question I have is because Snowmass will be getting part of the money, Basalt and City of Aspen, but we're still the responsible entity because it's kind of coming through Picken County. How do we oversee this and make sure that those funds are, because there's lots of lists of how the funds need to be used? I don't want to get us into trouble. So is there gonna just be an overall, like an audit or a oversight?
Yeah, so the, the I G A includes provisions where the, requiring the municipalities to cooperate and audit and, and provide documentation of the expenditures. And if there is a refund because a municipality received a reimbursement in, in error or improperly, that it would come from the responsible party. Frankly, we're at very, very low risk of this because, like I said, I, I think all entities have already made qualifying expenditures for reimbursement.
But in, in reading that provision that's in the, in the I G A, I just want to make sure that, so it'll come back either through our finance department just to see-
Yes.
So that, I just want to make sure that we have a, a view, we have a, we get to see it as it comes through, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be submitting the reimbursements.
Perfect. Great, thank you.
Kelly, go ahead.
Thanks, John. I knew we would get this money. I do have a question. Was this I G A a DOLA firm or internally devised?
Yeah, so this was internally devised. In the discussions that we had with the municipalities, we based it off of what the five counties that did qualify for the initial distribution did in sharebacks with their municipalities. And so this could have, there was a lot of discretion in, in how to, to do this, but we, we chose a model that was out there and that the municipalities could agree to.
Okay. I guess the only concern I have is, oh, there's a statement about any commitment to return monies to the U.S. Treasury and I'm wondering if that should, the money should get returned to DOLA since, you know, that's where they're coming through via the executive order and since there are provisions for like a reserve to reallocate money that isn't properly used. So that's-
Yeah, so-
I got a better answer for you, given I'm on that committee, but I don't, I don't know, yeah, that's one point that's flagged.
Yeah, so, so probably a few answers to that question. We're trying to build in process so that if for any reason, one of the entities doesn't have expenditures, and like I said, I think we're at low risk because I think we already, already do, that we identify that early and we can adjust the distribution to entities that, that do have expenditures. Because our goal is to spend this money locally and not hand any back because-
Yeah.
And so we've tried to set up the, the process to do that. DOLA did review this draft I G A and, and so they, at least it was submitted to them. I guess I shouldn't, I, I don't know if it was fully vetted or reviewed, but it was submitted as a, as a draft document during the approval of the grant process. I assume that is the process that they want.
Okay. And then I just have a little sidebar. I know I mentioned yesterday about the Aspen Valley Hospital trying to come in for the special district portion of that fund, but I also wondered if the Consolidated Sanitation District was doing any sampling for COVID in wastewater or if that is a program that they would be interested in pursuing and then, you know, get, going not towards our pot, but towards the remaining pot of money at the state.
Yeah, so just real quick, there, there are two other pots for the board to be aware of. So there's just over $27 million set aside for special districts, which is the pot that Kelly's referring to. There's also a reserve of an additional $27 million for highly impacted communities. So there's another opportunity for local governments to put in additional requests for CARES Act funding. So I, I have reached out both to, well, to A V H. I have not reached out to Aspen Consolidated Sanitation District. Patty and Greg may recall, there, there was some early discussion with the Board of Health about the, the test that, that tests the affluent to see what the concentration of coronavirus might, might be in the affluent. I think in those early discussions, Kelly, the, the concern was one of whether there was enough flow or sample within our smaller community, I'm sorry, my computer keeps talking to me here, to, for those tests to be effective. And I know public health staff was talking to the sanit-, or has been in discussions with the sanitation district and the health board, but I, the last I had heard was that there wasn't the volumes that they thought would be necessary for that test to be effective. Is that, Patty, is that what?
Yeah.
So we'll, we can keep following up on that.
Well, and to add to that, I, you're just real quick, to add to that, I think that as new information comes out about the virus, I mean, you're hearing things now when you flush the toilet, it spews the virus three feet into the air and, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that you're hearing. So I'm, I'm sure that the, like Kurt Dahl and, and Brian are keeping track of what those things, how those things are evolving. those things are evolving with water affluents.
Now, I will say, oh, I'm sorry.
Just wanted to mention, because standing up any program, you know, the CARES Act funding is for expenditures through December 30th, so that's months away, not your, you know, it's not that far away, so stand up any program. And I'm happy to hustle for any pennies to our community. And on that note, I just wanted to let the board know that I'll forward a letter that CCAT sent out yesterday to our delegation asking for additional federal funds, direct, for direct payment to counties and local communities in COVID response. So another round of funding that would hopefully include some budget backfill too.
And I will say that I do think there's going to be some conversation, for example, Snowmass Village has expressed potentially partnering with their share in the county on enhanced consumer protection programming, so that that may come back to us in some fashion with a commitment to work more closely or be sure that Snowmass Village has those resources, but that there's economies of scale with the county. As you're aware, the City of Aspen has been building its own consumer protection kind of programming within its environmental health. And Basalt has been doing quite a bit of programming as receiving funding. I think similar kind of ratios from Eagle County and Picking County. So I think we're going to have some more conversations coming up, and this is not the last CARES Act funding that we'll be looking to tap.
George, you have any questions? Okay. So let's see, this is not a public hearing today. That will be on August 12th. So I believe we're ready for, any further questions or ready for a motion? Kelly?
Hey, no, I'll just move to approve the emergency resolution authorizing the chair to sign an IGA for coronavirus relief funding, local government distribution in Picking County, for a confirmatory reading on August 12th.
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved in second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. George gives a thumbs up, okay. Another unanimous decision. Okay, moving on, we're going to item 5A, which is the one we added. And that is, and I'm going to read this off of my phone, "An emergency ordinance of the board authorizing the Picking County Sheriff to impose and rescind a ban on open fires and a prohibition on the sale, use, and possession of all fireworks in unincorporated Picking County at any time during 2020." And, okay, John Ely is there. I was looking for your name, you had your picture on the screen. So, John, take it away.
I should have weighed with two hands, Steve. This is an annual action of the BOCC that is taken in response to authority granted to the BOCC through the state, and the state legislature has conferred to the BOCC the authority for its jurisdiction regarding fire bans, fire restrictions, as well as fireworks bans and provisions on use, sale, or possession. So typically speaking, the BOCC enacts an ordinance just like this one before you today to give the authority to the Picking County Sheriff, recognizing that should climate changes occur or circumstances in the dryness of field and forest, that emergency bans or immediate fire provisions should be put in place rather than waiting to schedule such an event with the BOCC on BOCC regular meetings or work session dates. So last year, the BOCC conferred that authority and made the delegation the Picking County Sheriff, and the sheriff exercised it. The BOCC determined previously in 2018 that this authority would be delegated on an annual basis, and so this emergency ordinance is in the exact same form as last year's emergency ordinance to affect the same delegation. And with that, I would ask the board to adopt this emergency regulation through this ordinance, and we will have a public hearing when the matter comes back before the board after the appropriate publication. I'm not sure if that'll be on August, August the 12th or August 26th. That'll be consistent with whatever the publication dates in the paper will be.
Do we have to specify whether it's the 12th or the 26th today?
No, that'll be taken care of in the public notice.
Okay. So questions for John?
I'll make a motion to approve emergency ordinance of Board of County Commissioners of Picking County authorizing the Picking County Sheriff to impose and rescind a ban on open fires and a prohibition on the sale, use, and possession of all fireworks in unincorporated Picking County at any time during 2020.
Okay.
I'll second that.
It's moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 George gives a thumbs up. Okay, we're all in favor of that. Thank you, John, for bringing that forward. Next, we have an individual consideration item, emergency ordinance, and this is a confirmatory reading. Emergency ordinance authorizing the board to amend the communications site use lease and road access permit with the U.S. Forest Service for the RUDI communications site. And we have Drew Peterson on the line. Drew, take it away with your presentation.
Hi, how's it going? Sorry, I might be kind of loud. We're at a site right now. This is just an ordinance to approve signing the site lease for our upcoming RUDI bill, west end of RUDI shores, or west end of RUDI reservoir, sorry, top of mountain, eight-foot tower, two equipment shelters. And it's to get the board to agree to sign the special use permit to rebuild the site as well as for use and reconstruction of the road to the site, in a nutshell. That's about all I really got.
So questions from the board?
I have a comment.
George?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Patty?
Yeah, Drew, thank you, and I want to thank Kara too, because I know that she's been working on getting this through the Forest Service for years, I think, and it's nice to see the letter from Scott Fitzwilliam moving this forward, because we know we've been ready to go, just kind of hung up on waiting for the Forest Service to allow us to. So I'm glad that we're moving ahead on it, and I want to thank you and your whole department and Kara for your effort. And I would like to make a motion to approve, this is a confirmatory reading, though it is a public hearing.
Okay, it's, we have a motion, is there a second? And then I'll open the public, okay. So I will open the public hearing on this. Are there any members of the public who would wish to make a comment about the RUDI, the lease on the RUDI communications site, just above the RUDI, the dam at RUDI reservoir?
Where is he?
Let's see, Darcy would be for the Emma Farms. Michael Kopp. Or do you wish to comment on this or on the Emma Farms?
Emma Fields.
Thank you for checking in. I'm here for the Emma Fields.
Okay, we'll give a minute and see if anyone comes online. You can get the number on the grassroots screen or on our printed agenda.
Meanwhile, can we figure out where Drew is right now?
That's what I was just trying to figure out.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out the background. Now, should we do a, have this be a contest or just have Drew tell us? Because it's beautiful wherever he is.
I don't know where he is. Where are you, Drew?
You want any chance to guess? We're at Elephant.
At Elephant.
Yep.
At Elephant Hill?
Do the helicopter in the background. That's up toward Redstone, I think. Can't see much, we're in the low outside.
Well, it's Sierra Mountain up there, okay.
You be careful getting down. Looks like windy weather for a helicopter ride.
Rain's coming quick here, so we gotta get moving soon.
Okay, I've never seen the view from up there. I never had the privilege of hiking up there.
I want that helicopter ride.
Okay, so, we haven't had anybody call in on this item, so I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Is there any further discussion or questions or comments? I'll just comment to thank you, Drew, for your work on this, and I know that the people up in Meredith Thomasville area will really appreciate this because they'll be getting better service. Also, I believe, I believe this is also one of the communications sites for the state system, isn't it?
For RUDI, that's correct. It'll also be a state DDR site for public safety in the Frank County.
Okay, so it's very important for that reason.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Patty, you in favor?
Oh, I'm, yeah, aye, sorry.
Okay, we're all in favor. Thank you very much, Drew.
Bye, Drew, be safe.
Thanks, everybody. Yep, have a good one.
Okay, let's see, we've got three land use items. We've been going for, well, let's take one more here anyhow. You guys at home could just take your break when you need to. So we're moving to land use items. The first one is an ordinance amending Title VIII of the Picking County Code, specifically the 2006 Land Use Code, to amend two different sections to implement a new methodology for calculating the road impact fee. This is the first reading on this, and we have on the line Catherine Kristoff and G.R. Fielding, and Dwayne Guthrie, looks like you're here for this also. So Catherine, are you going to carry the discussion on this? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to start this off at least. So my name is Catherine Kristoff. I'm the planning engineer in the community development department. Also, I live right below Elephant Mountain, so thanks for, Drew, for being up there. With me today is G.R. Fielding, as you guys know, he's our county engineer, and also our consultant for the project, Dwayne Guthrie with Raftalus, and we've got Gabe Preston with RPI Consulting on the line. So this is just an update to our current fee. Picking County has had a road impact fee in place for nearly 20 years. What we're summarizing today is just a text code amendment to update the road impact fee. The board heard a complete presentation on our report during their work session on March 17th, so we're just going to give you a brief synopsis with what has changed since then today. The current fee is based on the type and size of development. The fee is used to help pay for county infrastructure, and this is proposed to continue with the fee update. Staff work closely with comm dev staff, the attorney's office, and also finance in the development of this report. This land use code text amendment has also been referred to the caucuses for comments, but we haven't heard anything back from the caucuses just yet. We may before second reading. During the March 17th work session, the board, or with the board staff heard, the board's desire to expand the fee to larger home sizes. Currently, the road impact fee is capped at 5,800 square feet of new heated square footage as proposed. The fee would capture new square footage up to 10,000 square feet. The report was amended to include a recommendation that the fee schedule be expanded to go up to 15,000 square feet in the future. But to capture this, we'd need to do some more traffic counts so that we have some defensible, defensible numbers to get it to that level. And we, there's some strategic areas where we want to plate those, place those traffic counts so that we're able to capture those larger home sizes. The code amendment was heard by the P and Z on July 7th. The planning commission also recommended that we expand the study to include larger square footage in the future. This recommendation was incorporated into the P and Z resolution, which hasn't been recorded just yet, but we're just finalizing that language. But the P and Z did pass, or did approve, they recommended approval to the board by a vote of five to zero. Since your packet was published, staff has worked a little bit further with the attorney's office. So at second reading, there will be two small changes, you'll see. The first is the code amendment, this code amendment is considered a rule of general applicability, and we're going to outline that more clearly in the ordinance for second reading. And then also, at second reading, in the amendment to the code section 81040, the code will be expanded to identify the specific equation used to calculate the road impact fee. Currently, the land use code just references a hyperlink to where we have a calculator, and we'll still have the calculator, but we'll also have the equation in the code so that it's defensible. One additional concern that a few of the P and Z members had was a fee increase for lodging, or the extent of the fee increase for lodging. And I think Dwayne is going to quickly review what options we might have around that, that portion of the fee specifically, so that the board could consider whether or not they're comfortable with the fee associated with lodging as proposed, or if they'd like to tweak that a bit before second reading. So I'll turn it over to Dwayne now.
Well, George has a question. Let's go to George Newman first. George?
Oh, thanks, thanks, Steve. I just, while we're on a residential chart, I forget the conversation that we had, why, why we're stopping at 10,000 square feet. It seems like we would be able to use a similar formula that you utilize up to that point to continue on for each additional thousand feet, because frankly, the largest impacts to our rural neighborhoods are from these large homes that are 10,000 and larger. So I forget how that, I understand that you're going to revisit that, but I'm not sure why we don't have that in right now.
I can take a first stab at that, and then Dwayne or Gabe, if you could back me up. But George, when we provided some traffic counts to our consultants to develop this update, as few of the areas that we were able to use, what we call travel sheds, and when we look at those travel sheds, such as Red Mountain or Mountain Valley was another one, the average home size is a certain size. You know, Red Mountain has a lot of very large homes, however, there are some not quite 15,000 square foot homes up there. And so the data basically gets you to about that average size, and we can use that, but to get to something where you have a number of those very, very large homes only going through one point for a travel shed, that's got to be a little bit more precise. And so we think that we've gotten a few areas where we can take some traffic counts in the future and see how they fit into that, into the existing data.
Yeah, but I still, thanks for that, but I still, it seems like if you have a formula that you're using, similar to the formula that we saw... Similar to the formula that we've, uh, come up with for our housing mitigation fee. Can go all the way up to 15,000 right now without having to try to figure out traffic counts. Because, uh, those, those houses are dispersed throughout the county and certainly from, uh, West Sopers Creek to, uh, Snowmass to Woody Creek. Um, in, in these neighborhoods and these, as you know, uh, the impact of West Sopers Creek years ago was tremendous. It was three years of heavy hauling traffic going up and down that road that certainly deteriorated that road. So it just seems like if we have a formula that's in place, we should be able to utilize it right now. Uh, and then make adjustments later if we need to.
Okay, I don't know, uh, Dwayne.
Think about that.
So Dwayne, did you want to respond to that or Catherine at all at this point?
I'd like to share my screen if possible.
Go ahead.
Okay. The, um, report had, uh, the data points that we, um, were provided by staff. And we, um, can you see my slide now that says average daily trips per unit by dwelling size?
Yes, we can.
Okay, they, the top right box, the table there are the actual places where we counted cars and we had count, counting units. And you can see the actual data points then plotted on that graph below. And it's a scatter plot so that, um, you have square feet of living area across the bottom, the x-axis. And then vehicle trips going up the y-axis. And you can see that, you know, it's a nice linear, um, regression fit. Very well, good regression, our square value of 93, our .93. So it's logical that you can extend that on past 10,000 square feet. Our recommendation is really a conservative one that, um, although it looks like it will be supported and that we don't expect any major change in the data. We just don't actually know what's beyond 10,000 square feet. So as a consultant, we only want to defend what we're actually certain of. Um, it is definitely logical and will probably likely get the same results like JR and Catherine pointed out. Really haven't, don't have the data to support it beyond 10,000 square feet, so we'd rather not go there until we have them.
Greg?
Well, I.
Oh, go ahead George, follow up.
Yeah, I, I can appreciate, as a consultant, you want to be conservative, but, uh, I've been hammering to have these road impact fees. Uh, increased probably for the last 10 years. Uh, GR probably knows that. So here's an opportunity to actually get this done in, in one, uh, clean swoop. And, and I would, I, I would suggest that we, uh, use this chart, uh, and just continue it up to 15,000 for right now.
Greg?
I was just gonna say that I, I agree with George. I think the consultants have done a good job here. They're, they've given us accurate data based on the information they have. I think it's up to us to extrapolate, do the extrapolation. Uh, I know they've got, they're looking at statistically significant numbers and if they can't have that here for obvious reasons, that's okay. But I think we can do the extrapolation and I'm with George. I think that, um, this is our opportunity to, to expand that. And if it needs to be corrected, we can correct it as we go, but, um, this is the time to do it.
Okay, Patty?
Yeah, um, it's not that I agree or disagree. I just would like legal input. As to the defensibility, I think that's an issue. Um, and I heard that word come up in Catherine's presentation. The last thing I would want us to do is something that may cost us more money out of pocket at the end of the day rather than wait. I do think we need to address houses greater than 10,000, but I want to make sure it's defensible just in case. So if there's legal that could give us some advice here, that would be terrific.
Thanks Patty. I was, I was going to mention that as well and thank you for catching it.
John Ely?
Um, I, the fundamental question to ask the consultant team while everybody is here on the, on the call, on the meeting. Is to, you know, basically explain whether or not. The calculated results of impacts for the data that you have can be extrapolated out to a, um, larger home size. In other words, is this a, a, a straight line extrapolation that can be completed and therefore defended? Or is, uh, does the data not support it? Any one of you guys?
Gabe, you want to chime in? Go ahead, but, um, I, I think it's, it's safe to say that the, the trend. Uh, would likely lead to the same results, um, that you have a good correlation. Um, all throughout the range from that we have data for, from 1,000 square feet of heated space up to 10,000 square feet. I think the county also has a good process involved that if we go ahead and run that formula up to 15,000 square feet. And somebody feels like they don't fit that, um, line and want to do an independent study and provide their own data. That's still an option for the, the larger houses or for anybody that feels like their. Their particular development doesn't fit our analysis. Um, so that, that is there, but, um. I think it is, um, supportable and is logical. Gabe actually got down into the weeds and doing the GIS and the property appraiser analysis, so if he wants to chime in.
Yeah, I mean, the only que, the only question, um, um, the only question I would raise about it or concern, I guess, is that. You know, is that formula Y equals, you know, .0017X etcetera descriptive? Uh-huh, or is it, um, you know, are, are we talking about causation? To me, I, we have these data points and going into it, I thought, you know, that, that really what we're doing is we're describing the scatter plot with that form, with that. Equation. Um, you know, that's essentially what that equation does. It, it describes the relationship between vehicle trip-ins and square footage given the scatter plot that's in front of you. So it, in my mind, it doesn't do much more than that from, you know, sort of the math major perspective, but. I, I think you, it's, I think the way that Dwayne put it is, is the right way to put it, is that it's likely. That if, you know, we continue to get more data points in that, it's likely that they would fit this same. That this, they would fit the same line, that the formula would still apply. But we don't know for sure, so that's.
I'm anticipating the data points, uh, uh, Gabe and Dwayne, I'm anticipating, and Catherine and GR as well. I'm anticipating the data points won't, um, won't expand on the square footage simply because we're limited. Uh, to certain areas where we can get accurate traffic counts. Is, is that correct?
We think we found, and you know, uh, GR can weigh in on this as well, but we made some recommendations in the report about where. Um, that where certain travel sheds, they're small travel sheds, right? You know, Trenteville Drive and, and these kinds of places where you have concentrations in big homes. So they're, uh, you know, up in, um, uh, near Buttermilk and, and that kind of thing. So there are some places where we think there are homes that are big enough to get some additional data points. Um, but you know, we, the, the counts have got to be done to be consistent sort of during peak season and that sort of thing. So, um. But I, you know, it, you're, you're right, in some sense, John, is that. It's gonna be really hard to come up with the upper end of the zoning, you know? To actually have a travel shed where the average home size is 15,000 per feet. That's gonna be hard to get all the way up there to 15,000. So if that's the goal, to get all the way up to 15,000 where the zoning cap's out. Um, I don't know that we're ever gonna have a data point that goes that big.
Well, based upon your comments, Dwayne, and the fact that we've got a straight line extrapolation for the data points that we do have. And, and no contrary indications, it seems that we should be able to extrapolate that line out to. Uh, a 15,000 square foot residential, um, or heated residential area. And, uh, and assess the appropriate impact fee. Um, uh, and that of course, 50,000 square feet is the, um, the, the house size cap within county zoning regulation currently. Um, what would be helpful and what I would recommend at this point is, um, for the BOCC to accept the ordinance. As presented and on second reading, uh, if we could have an additional statement from the team. Um, that, uh, that indicates the straight line extrapolation to 15,000 square feet of, uh, heated area. Is, uh, is a, is a reasonable, uh, extrapolation, then we can rely upon that. And amend the ordinance and the code, uh, at second reading to extend the impact fee up to 15,000 square feet. Um, along the same, um, progression as reflected in the, uh, the calculation in the, the lower graph. Um, on the, on the display page.
Okay, Patty?
Um, you know, I, I agree with that. Uh, I just have another question to tag on. Um, so if we do, John, what John Ely just recommended. Um, should we still then ask for a future more, more information as to document that 10 to 15,000 square feet? Or, I mean, just so we have that on the books at a future time? We can still move this forward now and request that that information be, um, gathered in the near future to move it forward. And the reason I'm comfortable with doing it is the, um, goes back to the fact that they can do an independent calculation. If somebody doesn't agree with the numbers. I, I always appreciate the opportunity for the applicants to be able to do that, so. But John, do you think we should still proceed with looking at more information? Um, to further document the 10 to 15,000 square foot?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. It's going, as the, um, uh, as Gabe mentioned particularly and everybody, I, I think has echoed it. It's difficult to find an area that would have an average, um, constructed home size of our top set allowable home size. So I think that, um, um, going forward, if we continue to expand, um, data collection. It will only help continually justify this, uh, slope that is depicted on the, uh, on the lower graph. And, uh, would, would further exhibit the justification for the continued extrapolation up to 15,000 square feet. And I'm not sure, but in instances of, uh, construction activity for the, um, for a, a, a home size of 15,000, uh, square feet of heated area. We may be able to get traffic counts related to particular construction sites just by being able to put up a, uh, a, a, a traffic. Uh, uh, count measuring, uh, device, whichever, uh, is currently being employed through, uh, Public Works. To get traffic counts for a particular individual, um, construction site. And then accumulate that type of data and, um, and have it continually, uh, refine the slope. In other words, this, this calculated formula, uh, to derive at a, an ever refining amount for a road impact fee.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, I'll weigh in on this issue right now since we're discussing it. Definitely during construction, I think the bigger the house is, either the longer it's gonna take to have workmen going up there to. Get it built, or they're gonna be doing it with more workers in a shorter period of time. So during the construction, the larger square footage house up to 15,000 would have a greater impact on the road. Once the house is built, the, the average use between a 10,000 and 15,000 square foot house might not be that much different. At some point, every house is going to have their hot tub, uh, they're gonna have housekeepers, they're gonna have gardeners. Uh, they're gonna have caterers, they're gonna have parties. And I don't know at what point, you know, what difference between a 10,000 and 15,000 square foot house maybe isn't. That great of a difference in terms of the service people who are going to go to that house. As well as the average trips that people are taking, running up, up and down the road to. Get, get to town or to go skiing or to go out to dinner and all those things are probably pretty similar with that size of a house. But we don't, we don't know without, you know, doing a measurement on it. So, uh, just though in terms of the beating up the roads during the construction. I would say the bigger houses are definitely beating up the road more. 15,000's gonna beat up the road more than a 10,000 square foot house. So I personally would be comfortable with, uh, extrapolating that out at, at this point. I think that it might be wise if we had a good accounting system to. Keep track of the fees that are paid by people. And then in the future, if we actually find out that the curve doesn't, isn't a straight line extrapolation, maybe it drops off to a more level. Thing, we maybe, you know, it'd be good to know that. We might even be in the position of having to refund some, some people's. Extra fees that they paid if, if we find that it's a, you know, substantial difference. So want to put those ideas out there. So getting back to the train of thought that Catherine had started and was passing it on to Dwayne and had to do with the, the lodging. Um, you know, the differences that the P and Z brought up about the lodging fee. And Dwayne, do you want to address that issue?
Absolutely, um, if you could.
Non-residential.
So please, please include page numbers. Really, I'm trying to follow in the packet and I'm really enjoying what I'm reading here, but I'm, I'm trying to, trying to follow you. So if you have page numbers, please share those.
There aren't page numbers. It's Exhibit B under the Traffic Management or the, the, or the recital or the ordinance.
This, this slide has a new information line item at the bottom. Um, where the, at the bottom of the table, we have non-residential impact fees. And the column labeled Average Weekday Vehicle Trip In, those are data points or traffic generation data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. There are a couple of categories that we could use for lodging. For the draft report, we use hotel. And you could see that the resulting fees, second row from the bottom, um, increased, um, quite a bit. Um, roughly going from $2,428 in the current fee to proposed fee of $6,235. Motel room. Excuse me. The motel room is another category that IT publishes, has a more conservative trip generation rate. It, we, if you look at the descriptions of the, in the IT, um, um, Traffic Generation Manual, or it's actually published online now, it's electronic. But they, um, I think hotels are a better fit for Picken County, but motel will certainly be an option. And it would result in a more conservative fee that would be more in line with what you have today. Both of them are reasonable. It's just a matter of what, what, um, the County Commission thinks is the best legislative policy decision, given all things considered. Not just the technical decision, it also has to do with, you know, economic development goals and strategic, what's best kind of considerations for the county. Given that you're a tourist destination site and you're very concerned about, um, costs for lodging and things like that. That might be the better option to use the hotel, uh, trip generation rate rather than hotel. I put those options out there and be glad to answer any questions about the difference or, or pros and cons.
Okay, George?
Yeah, I mean, so we're talking about unincorporated Picken County and the opportunity to build a hotel. Or motels are really limited geographically. You know, I can think of, uh, up in Redstone, uh, there may be a, a, a scrape and replace type of motel, um, versus a hotel. So it's, it's really a limited, um, number. It's not like we're looking at the municipality, so. Um, I would probably go with a motel per room at this point.
Me too.
Do we have the opportunity, uh, if there was a large structure, larger structure similar to our previous discussion? Uh, went from a motel to a, I can imagine a, a large hotel being built in unincorporated Picken County though.
Right, and, and one thing to remember is that this is about the net increase in rooms. Uh, one, and two, that each applicant will have an opportunity to propose their own fee based on their own trip. on their own trip generation rate that they think that they'll have.
Yeah, I was just thinking that as George points out, there's not a lot of opportunity to build a big hotel in unincorporated Picken County. But what we have seen in the last few years are the rental by owners. And all of a sudden, a private home that maybe only had a few trips per month or week, if they're actually doing a serious VRBO business, as many are, road impacts are greatly increased here. And I, let me know if I've missed something, but is that reflected in any of this?
I don't think we have a way to capture it.
Specifically, yeah, specifically, that's fairly difficult. But you have to remember, all the data that we collected to try to back this up is a yes and. So is it the construction? Yes. And is it the residential? Yes. And is it the person going out to dinner? Yes. And so all those things that the board has brought up is all captured within that data. It's very difficult to start parsing all those different uses out. I haven't looked, I don't know if IDE has any sort of guidance on, you know, VRBOs and Airbnbs, the short-term rentals. I haven't seen anything like that yet. But, you know, that could be something that we look at or look towards the, that professional community to develop soon.
I'm just thinking to follow up on that, the, you know, the modern way of doing it versus the old in your packet here with best practices and the new way of assessing impact fees, it seems like it's about people rather than rooms in this case. And maybe that's something to think about going forward.
Okay. Kelly?
Can you help me understand the ID description of hotel and motel a little bit better as to how their trip generation numbers come out differently?
Sure. Just going by the definitions, basically, way IT collects their information is that you have traffic engineers and different types of firms submitting data to them as they do their own independent studies. And then they periodically tabulate those and issue a new trip generation manual roughly every five years. So the latest one is from 2017. Basically, hotel is going to offer more services like restaurants and dining. They'll also have meeting rooms, conference space. They'll generally have more employees because they're offering more in services. And they'll generally have better recreational type facilities like pools and gyms and things like that. So that would be probably more applicable for more of a destination kind of place where people are staying, you know, multiple nights and also business travel. Motels traditionally more limited. It's more of the like one night stay on the way to somebody else, not necessarily another destination, not necessarily an endpoint. And so it's, you know, it's kind of apples to oranges. I think in Picken County, you're not on an interstate, you're not likely to get that kind of pass through trips. So that's why we originally put hotel as what we thought would be the better fit. But motel definitely, you know, is an option and is a, it's a category that has enough studies to have a statistically valid non-trip generation rate and is an option if you want to go that way.
Sure. So I guess, thank you. I appreciate that because, you know, I guess we have to ask, what would be a motel in Picken County and why are people staying there, you know, just to pass through or because it's the affordable lodge option, you know, and that it's enduring just as long of a stay as would happen at a hotel. You know, because I'm not, I don't, I don't envision that people who are staying at our more affordable lodging are just doing it as pass through. You know, this is a resort vacation destination. So I guess, I mean, for me, I would tend towards the hotel calculation just to more fairly and accurately collect that based on use. But, you know, that's more intuitive than, I guess, based on the numbers. So thanks.
Okay. Patty?
Yeah, Kelly, thanks for that question because I was wondering the same thing. And in light of the explanation, the definition of lodging, hotel versus motel, why can't we put both in there and then determine if we do ever have an application? And I've been on this board for a while and I can't remember when the last time we had an application for a hotel or a motel. But, that being said, that doesn't mean it might not happen. But if we put both in, then we could determine at the time whether it was classified as a motel or a hotel by the amenities being offered and we could use appropriate fee. So is there a reason we can't put both?
I'll tag on.
No, there's no reason. Just generally how impact fee schedules are going, kind of best practices, is that we've been going generally to fewer and broader categories. It's easier to implement. You don't have to worry about change of use. Putting both in there will just mean Catherine or GR or somebody perhaps actually make that call at the staff level. But it won't be, it won't matter to me.
I know Steve's going to add on to that, but...
Tagging on to that same idea, sort of the guest ranch with cabins would be similar to a motel in a sense. It's kind of in that category. But the people going there would more likely be staying there at the guest ranch and not running back and forth into town so much. They maybe would be going on horseback rides or something right there at the ranch. But that could be taken into account when, if someone makes an application for such a business. While we're on this slide, I have a question. It's related to agricultural buildings which are not included on the non-residential per 1,000 square feet down at the bottom of the chart. Some agricultural buildings, like a big fancy barn on a ranch, which there are, some of those have been built, where they actually have employees then going there to work in that barn, taking care of the horses there or something, I think should be included. Why are they not included on this chart?
I want to take the stab at that first and kind of lay out how it's done today. And I have an idea of what you could do or what other communities have done.
Yeah, one thing is that the, it's not just square footage, but it's heated square footage. Maybe that should be expanded on. So a lot of those ag structures, if they are truly ag, usually aren't heated. And so really the fee is just being applied to the residential use of the structure. And I guess I'll just add one point of clarification generally is the fee applies to new, the new square footage. So relating back to the, going up to the 15,000 square feet, what we're really just capturing is the new. So if someone were to tear down an existing large home, we're only able to capture the fees going forward on any expansion. So just keep that in mind as we're going through this. But yeah, for the agricultural operations, the fee is just being applied to a heated square footage.
Okay, understand that, Catherine. Okay, let's see, we've been asking questions kind of as we go along. But Catherine, did you have any more presentation to give?
No, that was the extent of it today. I guess I'd appreciate a little more clarity on how you're feeling going towards hotel or motel. And then otherwise, I think we could, we could capture your other comments before second reading and we'll bring those forward to you again.
Okay. George?
Yeah, I mean, I like Patty's idea, just include the both. I mean, the chance that we'll see a hotel being built is pretty slim. Although I also like Greg's comment in terms of VRBO. And I think we should be perhaps looking at trying to add a category in that as well because we are seeing a substantial increase in that type of usage.
Can I respond to the RBO?
Go ahead, Gabe.
So one of the issues, one of the complexities with, with RBOs is that, you know, they're homes. And one can list them and delist them out of whim. So that makes it really difficult. Like when a home is being approved, it's being approved as a dwelling unit. And then right now with the, you know, the way things are under the current regulations, one can rent their home out as a vacation rental on a part-time basis. They might only rent it out, you know, during the holidays. They might rent it out during the summer. They might rent it out during the winter. They may rent it out for a while and then decide they never want to do it again. Or they may never, you know, they may build a house and never think they're going to do that and then they do end up doing it. So there's a real confusion there about it. And I know that the county is looking into this in terms of trying to track down how many RBOs there are. But I just would like to suggest that that is, to a large degree, sort of a land use regulatory and zoning issue as much as it is anything else. I did learn that Teton County, Wyoming, it's a different state, right? So there's a whole different set of laws and all that. But they just call it lodging and it's not allowed. In most, you know, in the ag and residential districts, they're just not allowed because they consider it to be commercial lodging. And not many counties do that, but I thought that was pretty, you know, pretty clear cut. That's lodging. You can't do it out here. And so then they would have to get a land use permit for a commercial lodging use to be doing something like that out in the unincorporated areas of Teton County. Now, obviously, they feel like they've got enough lodging elsewhere. You know, those, those RBOs do serve a function. And, but the vast majority of them, from some of that work that we did for the airport, are in town. They're in the municipality. Most of them are condos. Most of those RBOs are condos. So anyways, that's just some insights along those lines.
Okay. Kelly?
Thanks. It also seems to me like the RBO use would be captured in the average weekly trip number and would essentially drive that number up for everybody else in that square footage category. So, you know, as long as I think those numbers are being collected at an appropriate time, and should we allow someone to do an independent study, require that they collect those numbers at an appropriate time to really be reflective of use, you know, then, then it's just going to push the fee higher for anybody who might want to do that in that, at that home size anyway.
Just wanted to say, I think this is a worthwhile conversation. The number of VRBO units or pillows, either pillows or beds, is, you know, it's in the low thousands. Maybe it's between 1,000 and 2,000 units. So that's the equivalent of several hotels. So I think it's something that needs to be looked at. That's all. But I appreciate Kelly's comment.
So just keep in mind too, that if someone does do, you know, they're running a VRBO out of their home, if they're, if they're doing it right, they are paying taxes on that. The county would actually be getting income based on the number of people who are staying there and for how, how long they stay. That wouldn't go directly to the road impact fee, but it would come to the county and could be used for, you know, impacts, just general impacts to the county at whatever the general fund is funding.
Can I just?
Patty?
Yeah, I'm just going to add that, you know, I know Picken County is currently looking at how to manage and the state is looking at county's authority to manage those short-term rental type situations. Northwest Colorado Council of Governments, Gabe, for your information, I think has a link or they were going to create a link on the Northwest COG website with whatever ordinance regulations, authorities, whatever are being garnered within our region or with outside of our region, inside the state of Colorado and outside, to try and put together that information for anybody who wanted to create their own local ordinance or regulatory, whatever, to manage those. So that's another good point of reference for us. I think it's definitely something we need, but I think capturing it right now as part of this would be really difficult. But I think once we move forward with some authority we might have as a county to regulate air, RB, whatever they, whatever you want to call them, I think we can then maybe bring this in at that point. But I would like to, I would like to move this forward, of course, on first reading and include both lodging and motel. I'm sorry to be creating more work for GR and/or Catherine, but I don't think we're going to see a rush of motels and/or hotels coming in. I would be surprised. But I think this is long overdue and time to get it done. That's a motion.
That is a motion. And is there a second?
One second.
Comments? I do have a couple of comments. One, it's answering a question Catherine had way back at the beginning about the caucuses. I know the Snowmass Capitol Creek Caucus just looked at this last night. And I believe they're probably going to be sending some comments in on it. One of the, actually, this is another point I meant to bring up, but I think one of their comments will be about if there is a lot of large excavation with many dump truck loads on a county road. It's not heated space, but this is not capturing that kind of construction activity in the county. Maybe that is captured somewhere else. And I'm thinking, I mean, there's an instance on East Sopers Creek Road where it was a larger outdoor arena, but they removed all the dirt, then they brought in all new fill for it. It was on the order of hundreds of dump truck loads impacting the county road. Now, that wouldn't be captured in this impact fee for heated, for heated space. But is that captured somewhere else?
It's not captured in the impact fees. I guess I'd say it's, as we've said in the previously, it's kind of inherently captured in some of the traffic counts, that those trips are captured in the traffic count. And one thing that Gabe might be, or Dwayne might be able to stand on this a bit more, but the way these impact fees work is that they're really set up to capture capital improvements and the result of an expansion of development. It's not, not for maintenance of roads. So sometimes the impacts of these large trucks, unfortunately, a lot of their impacts are affecting our ability to maintain the roads. And there's a line in the sand between a maintenance project and projects that expand the carrying capacity of our road system, which these impact fees are intended to capture.
Okay. So any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approving on first reading?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Thanks, guys. Gabe, nice to see you again.
And Steve, that will come back, a second reading to increase the road impact fees up to 15,000.
Yeah, that's included in there along with adding hotel, motel.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine, GR.
Thank you.
Dwayne and Gabe for being with us here today.
Gabe's getting to be a regular.
Yeah, two times, two times in a row.
All right. Well, we'll see you tomorrow, I guess, right?
Yeah. Only if you're on the Board of Health.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye. Can we just do this one on the ELM and then?
Yep, I think we'll do the ELM one. I know that Jim Duty has been on the line for a long time. So let's do the ELM. This is a land use public hearing. So this is the resolution granting annual review approval to ELM gravel permit, special review permit. And Tammy Coates... And Tammy Coatsen is on, aye, Tammy? And then Jim Duty from ELM Gravel. So take it away, Tammy.
All right, so, um, it's hard to believe, but another year has passed, and it's time again for the BOCC to consider the stagnant gravel pit annual review. Um, as we just mentioned, um, Jim Duty is on the line, he's representing the owner of the parcel, who is ELM Construction Incorporated. And I'm guessing everyone's pretty familiar with where, uh, the pit is located, but I'll share my screen just to give you guys some site context here. So, hopefully, you can see that. Um, on the screen, uh, is the parcel highlighted in blue. Um, you can see that it's bordered by Woody Creek to the north, uh, the Woody Creek Plaza to the, to the west, and the, um, Aspen Racing Club track just to the south. Um, from what I can gather, uh, ELM has operated a sand and gravel operation at the stagnant pit, that's a sound wave in seventy-one. Um, they've continued to have permits from the county since nineteen seventy-four. Um, in two thousand and nine, the BOCC approved Resolution fifty-two, two thousand and nine, which approved the ELM special use permit, which notably approved Phase Two and a twenty-year extension to operate. It also included that condition that required the annual public hearing withheld each year to review the activities of the previous year. Uh, this annual review is done for several reasons. Um, one is to give the operator an opportunity to demonstrate that they are in compliance with the conditions of the permit. Uh, but the next is to provide the county the opportunity to require corrective measures or to impose new conditions. And lastly, it's to provide an opportunity for a special comment on the operation. The major activities that occurred during this past season included extraction of gravel deposits, crushing and toppling of gravel, stop sign gravel, intermittent operation of an asphalt plant, um, the operation of these United Companies concrete batch plants, uh, the scale and office recycling of asphalt pavement. Um, ELM also holds a five-year special review permit from the county for a commercial snow dump, um, that was issued in two thousand and twenty-two. That'll be out for expiration in the next coming years. However, that's still pervert, it's kind of separate from the review right now. Also notable is last November, uh, the BOCC approved the request to extend the date of operation to December twentieth, to allow three more weeks of, uh, production time to compensate for the time lost, uh, due to several mechanical failures. Um, the applicant has stated, though, unfortunately, that a majority of that time was not utilized because they had the ongoing mechanical failures. So, um, like I just said, this year's review is from the two thousand and nineteen operating season. Uh, the criteria for review is based on compliance with the standards set in Resolution fifty-two, two thousand and nine, and the resolution that was approved in two, just last year. Um, within the memorandum, I've, uh, gone through each of the conditions specifically and addressed, um, how they comply with those conditions, so I won't go through them now and read them. Um, but I'll just run through the general, uh, prominent conditions. So, the first major condition is the requirement that the applicant submit various reports for soil, water, noise, and subject monitoring. Uh, the applicant submitted three reports for each of these areas, um, and staff has reviewed the results and has confirmed that the results are in general compliance with the adopted thresholds and monitoring standards. Um, as of near past, the noise test did have readings that slightly exceeded the fifty-five decibel threshold. Um, those noise tests are taken monthly along various sites along the ELM property. Um, this year, there were three readings that slightly exceeded that limit. However, anomalies are to be expected, um, and can be attributed to things such as, like, a, a plane flying overhead. Uh, the OWTS inspection was completed last summer as well, and there were no major issues raised in that report. Um, as well as the soil and water reports had no, or, um, had results that were all within the expected threshold standards. Um, the second major component, um, of the conditions is regarding where the mining activities can occur, um, and the, um, direction of progress of the mining, um, which needs to occur basically from the south to the north and maybe from left to east. So, let's see, I'll add to my screen here, so this is just a photo taken from staff's site of it on June fourth, um, showing the mining activities that were occurring on that day. Um, the, the photo is taken from the southeast side of the pit looking north. Um, so, per the two thousand and nineteen BOCC resolution, um, prior to any mining past, a one-thousand-foot setback line, the seven-hundred-foot setback line from the residence to the north, um, of the property, um, is required to be surveyed and staked in March. Um, also, mining during the two thousand and nineteen season, um, no mining was occurring in closer than the seven-hundred-foot mark, um, from the main residence to the north, and, um, the purpose of these conditions is to allow time for, uh, required vegetation to grow and just to phase the mining activities in a, in a phased manner. Um, at, at staff's site of it in June, the mining has progressed into the one-thousand-foot setback line. Um, the stakes were present, and the applicant has stated that they do not anticipate to progress near the seven-hundred-foot setback line this twenty-twenty operating season. Um, the stakes were just a little bit weathered, and there was some vegetation growing in around them, so I would just recommend to the applicant that maybe they, uh, add some flags or paint the stakes just to maintain that visibility. So, um, another major aspect of the annual review is, uh, through, to the reclamation activities. Um, since two thousand, um, reclamation activities have been occurring. Um, approximately eight acres in the north side of the pit have been backfilled in accordance with the approved plan, um, and they've been seeded, um, through this past season. Um, in two thousand and nine, um, at the time of the Phase Two expansion request, landscaping was required to be planted, um, on that north side of the mine. Um, at that time, the landscaping had initially failed, and so during the two thousand and fifteen annual review, the BOCC did adopt conditions that specifically outlined a tree planting plan, uh, watering schedule, and replacement procedures. The county also took a thirty-five thousand dollars deposit to ensure that there would be funds available on the chance that landscaping needed to be repla- replanted. So here's some images of, of a couple of the trees. There's, there's a lot more, but these are a couple trees, uh, near the Woody Creek and, um, along the, uh, north side of that pit. Maybe a couple more of those, um, required plantings. And then, as you can see, there are a couple trees that are, are a little stressed, um, and there were a few that, that didn't appear to be totally living. So, that's why I recommend that the applicant work with a professional landscaper or a third-side arborist during this coming, or this, this season, um, to inspect the trees and initiate a maintenance or replacement plan. Um, and then, staff further recommends that in the fall of two thousand and twenty-two, uh, the community development department should do a final inspection to, um, confirm the viability of those required plantings, and then return, you know, that security deposit if all those trees are viable at that time. So, I guess the last part of that education, um, and reclamation, uh, requirement is, um, the issue is, um, ongoing weed maintenance. So just like every other parcel in the county, um, noxious weeds are always an ongoing, um, effort to manage. Um, in this case, it's just a bigger scale, and there is a bit more disturbance, um, but the applicant has been, um, contracted annually with a private applicator to, um, take care of those noxious weeds, and it is, it is evident that they are being managed, um, but, like every property, it's going to be an ongoing thing that they need making that management. And then, so as far as public comments go, comments were submitted from the Woody Creek Caucus. They noted that there were no objections to the continued operations. Last year, they did make, uh, comments that are a concern that the drivers were completely stopping at the stop sign near the wire intersection of Smith Way and Upper River Road. Um, so staff had drafted a condition that, that drivers be notified of the stop sign. And so far this year, uh, we haven't gotten any complaints, and that wasn't brought up in the caucus comments. However, there were some concerns that were brought up by the caucus having to do with odors in the Woody Creek Plaza, um, specifically odors from possibly the asphalt operation. So, the applicant has stated that they are working with the caucus to try and monitor these issues. Um, they've stated that they've installed a windsock to determine, and if there's any weather atmospheric condition that might be occurring, um, that's contributing to those odors. So that's an ongoing, um, effort that they're, they're working out with, with the caucus. Other than that, staff doesn't have any reason to believe that compliant, that all, that there is compliance with the conditions of approval. Um, and so therefore, staff recommends that the board approve the resolution granting the annual review for the gravel pit special review permit. Um, I, yeah, Jim Duty is on the line, so he can answer any specific, um, questions about the operation.
Yeah. So questions for Tammy right now? Does anyone have anything specific? Greg?
Hi, Tammy, good to see you, and, and thanks for being here, Jim. I'm, I, uh, I, the only thing I've heard on this was one constituent said that there are occasional dust issues, and I'm just wondering if you've had any, uh, I see you didn't have any complaints in two thousand and nineteen. Um, have we had dust problems there, and is there something that needs to be addressed?
Yeah, that is, it's the condition in one of the resolutions that they maintain, um, watering when there's dry periods, that they, you know, control that dust. Um, I did just speak with Kurt Dahl, who said he did hear something of the same tune, um, so he was going to reach out to the person that had, um, notified him that they, there were some dust issues, but ELM is required to do watering when there's dusty conditions. So that, that is one of the conditions. You can add to that if you...
Great, thank, thank you. I, I have not heard any other, uh, any other comments, uh, in the past year, so I have to say, I think in general, we've got a, a good operation going there, and they're an essential service, and it's nice they're not having to import, uh, the materials from outside the county in this case.
And, and they do take a lot of the, like, we were just talking about the excavation and the fill materials from these larger homes, they do take on a lot of that fill and, um, reduce the trips down valley to take it out of the county.
Okay, um, there was, in the packet, there was, it mentioned the odors from the asphalt operation, uh, had been mentioned, and I was just wondering if there's any way that that the asphalt operation could be relocated to a different part of the pit that maybe would minimize odor problems? Or perhaps, when, just do it when the wind is blowing the right way? Now, I realize when an ass- a paving project is going on, the wind is blowing what direction it is blowing, and ELM needs to provide the asphalt to the paving companies, uh, so that might not be possible, but, um, I don't know if Tammy, you could address that, or maybe Jim could address that?
Well, miss, Mr. Chairman, um, it's, it's very rare that, because we sit up a little bit higher than Woody Creek, and then, and the, and when it, when the fuel's being burnt, it's hot, and so it will rise. But every once in a while, we'll get a complaint, not very often, but it, you know, we're, we're aware of it. We're, uh, but, you know, when we're, when they're paving, um, it's, it would be hard to reschedule something that's a, a C-dot job, or a Picking County job, or, you know, something like that, where, but, but we're conscious of what's happening.
Yeah, and I know you can't, you can't control the wind direction, and you probably set up those dates for a paving project months in advance sometimes, so... Uh, and looking, looking at the aerial view of the pit, it showed the, I think, the concrete batch plant towards the entrance to the pit. Is that where the asphalt batch is also?
It's, yes, it would be just north of it. And, uh, the concrete, uh, batch plant, that is, um, the United. And they, yeah, and, and so, and in different county, we're using our asphalt plant on their property, and so it's just kind of a something that we work out together.
Okay. Thank you. Jim, do you have any other things that you would want to add to what, what Tammy has presented already?
Yes, Tammy had talked about the, uh, the reclamation piece and the trees that are stressed, and some probably did. We do have that, uh, bond permit, thirty-five thousand dollars, and I haven't had a chance to sit down and talk to staff yet, but we're thinking that we would like to have some of that money used toward that reclamation piece for those trees, and some arborists just go ahead and, uh, and do it. If there's any money left at the end, what is it, two thousand and twenty-two, I believe, it can be returned, or maybe we totally deplete that fund, but, you know, I think that would be the best way to, uh, go out and, uh, replace everything.
Okay.
I think that was one of the options, if I read my notes right.
The one tree in the picture that's on the screen right now, the experience we have had is if that tree is, if the dead portion is cut off of there by the arborist, the tree actually will, will stay healthy and, and keep growing and add, you know, they'll get a new top growing up. If you leave the dead part on there, then it ends up, the whole tree eventually will die from that. So that, you might mention that when you do contact an arborist, that might be their strategy they could use on a tree like that one in the photograph.
It might save it then, yes.
Um, questions? Is it, do any of the board have questions for Jim? Or further questions for Tammy?
I just have a comment.
Um, your comment, and then we do, this is a public hearing also, so Patty, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I just want to thank you, Jim, and all the efforts that ELM has done over all the years with all the issues that have popped up for quite some time. You know, it's not easy to operate a gravel pit and wind and dust and trying to speciate, is that dust coming from your property or the property from the racetrack? I mean, but I think you guys do a commendable job there. As far as the trees, I do agree with staff, get an arborist out there, have an arborist, um, check it out. And as far as using of the funds that, the thirty-five thousand, um, if staff determines that some of that needs to be used to mitigate any trees that might need to be replaced, I don't have a problem with using that fund, so that's what it's there for. So, um, I think, uh, I think we could move this along, and, um, hopefully, we will see you again next year.
Thank you, and, uh, we, we appreciate putting the, uh, packet together for you. We, we try to get it to you by January thirty-first of every year, and, uh, it's just, it's a greater, great opportunity, a great... a great partnership with Pitts County. The extension, we appreciate being able to at least come to you and say, hey, we're not going to have any product in the spring. Can you, can you help us out? And we really appreciated your vote last November.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Greg?
Yeah, yeah, and Jim, I'd want to echo our gratitude for you for being here and running this operation in a county full of people who are really are paying attention and are concerned about, about public lands and about what goes on in the neighbor's yard. I did want to know if, if you, if you take, if you measure when you get a complaint or a call, what's the response time if somebody calls in about a dust complaint or an asphalt complaint or who knows what else? What is it your, what's your response rate? What's your scramble time to respond to that? I think it'd be nice to have an understanding of just how responsive ELM has been when these things happen.
Our HMA manager, Randy Ficklin, when we had gotten that complaint about the odors, he was, he was clear across the state. And he got back here, we talked a little bit, and then he went directly down to Woody Creek and started trying to talk to some of the residents. And then from there, he thought, well, hey, why don't we get the windsocked up as well and then have my, have my men monitor that so that we know what's going on. Because he felt like, on that particular occasion, that the complaint was, we weren't sure what it was, because there was only one resident that made the complaint and it seemed like how it went was they had some windows open, the fumes came in, but the other residents around there didn't, didn't really have a problem. So I'm not really sure what happened there. But we, back to your question, we, Randy was there within 24 hours.
That's great to know. Thank you. I appreciate the, the response is so important and I do appreciate that.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing now. If any members of the public wish to comment about the annual review for the ELM gravel permit special review, now is your chance to call in. And, let's see, there are several numbers there that, Andrew, did you keep track of?
Yes.
There's two numbers there, the 8020, 8020, the last four numbers?
That's the one, let's try it again.
Are you here for the?
8020, 8020, the last four numbers. Are you here for the?
So 8020, if you'd like to make a comment, please turn your television off and then we'll unmute you again.
Yeah, we were getting a lot of feedback on there, so we had a hard time understanding you.
Yeah, we were getting a lot of feedback on there.
Do you have your, have you turned the volume on, do you have your television on, turn the volume off on that?
If you can hear me, if you're looking for the 8020 number, I am here for the Emma Fields.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And then the other number was 0372?
I'm al, I'm also on for the Emma Fields.
Okay, okay, we've got that noted then. And I think every, all the other names on there, everybody wanting to weigh in on the Emma Fields, I believe. So, I don't think we're having anybody call in to weigh in on this issue, so I'll close the public hearing for the ELM gravel operation and bring it back to the board here. And...
I'll make a motion to approve.
So Patty moved to approve, is there a second? Let's see.
A second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve. Greg just got back. We don't know if George is there, but I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And just one final comment to Jim. I say this every year, I think, but everybody uses gravel whether they realize it or not, because if they use the roads or they have a septic system at their house, they might not realize that they, the amount of gravel that they, is necessary for keep, for living here, living in a house, using the roads. So it's really appreciated, I'll echo what Greg Pochman had said. I thank you for having that as a public service right here in the county.
So can we?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we really do try to become, or stay good neighbors. And I want to thank Tammy for putting together a really good report for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Tammy.
All right, thank you. So we are going to take a 10-minute break right now. Let's come back at 3:10 and we will take up the Emma Fields at that point. We have been sitting here for three hours at this point, so we need to stand up and stretch. So 3:10, we will take up the Emma Fields. Thank you.
Where would you guys want me to sit up?
It's up to the camera guys.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. Today is the July 22nd, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, and we're to our final land use item, which is Emma Fields LLC. And Leslie Lamont is our staff person. She is here in the room with Patty Clapper and me, and the other commissioners are all at home on Zoom call. So we are going to have a presentation by Leslie, then we'll have questions from the commissioners to Leslie and other staff if necessary. Then we'll have a presentation by the applicant of Emma Fields. We'll have questions by the B O C C of the applicant. And then we will open the public hearing where anybody can call in. And a bunch of you are already on, on the line and we'll, we'll get to all of you. So that's the procedure we, we will follow. And so right now, Leslie, you have the floor and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Steve. So for the record, I'm Leslie Lamont, and I want to say first that the public notice for affidavit, the affidavit for public notice has been submitted and it complies with our code requirements for public noticing. I'll review the proposal and then Andrew has prepared a drone site visit for you that we'll put up for you all to see. And then the applicant will make a presentation. The applicant, Matt Patel, Dr. Matt Patel and his representative Luke Banburger are on the line and they have other members of their team on the line. So I just want to make a brief note about the review process. This is a land use code text amendment and a certification of the zoning plan and a special review for a specific use on this property. The text amendment requires a first and second reading of an ordinance. Second reading is set for August 12th. The special review requires a resolution. Both items require public hearing and we have set today for your public hearing. Staff recommends that the B O C C, B O C C consider and discuss both the text amendment and the special review and then take action on August 12th. You received public comment in your packet and since your packet went out, four more emails were received. Three of them were sent directly to the board for you to review and put, be put into the record. A fourth email was sent to me with similar concerns, but she did not want to make this a formal comment. And I've circled back with that citizen and said, if you want to submit a formal letter to, for the packet, we can add that on August 12th. So the applicant, Emma Fields LLC proposes land use code text amendments to create a definition of accessory agricultural use and add that as a special use review in the unclassified zone district. The applicant also requests special review for proposed accessory agricultural use, a distillery, as a farm product processing operation. The applicant does not own the property, but has it, has the property under contract. If this concept of an accessory agricultural use is supported, as well as a special review, then he will pursue purchase of the property, start cleaning it up, and start to site plan the property. So for today, for this application in this review, site plan review is not part of your consideration today. Site plan review will be required as the property redevelops. So the property is roughly eight acres and it is right here, I've outlined in red. Oh, I didn't hit share my screen.
Oops.
Oops. Let me go back. Oh, I thought I had it today. Here we go. Uh huh. Please note for the record, Andrew didn't have to help me with that one. Andrew's teaching me a lot. So the property is roughly eight acres. It's right here, outlined in red. All the properties surrounding this property is zoned AR10, except for this small area right in here, which is zoned AHPUD. You can see up in here is the Basalt Town boundary. The pedestrian bridge of the Rio Grande Trail crosses right here and this property is about two and a half miles south of the town of Basalt. The water is provided via a well and sewer is handled by onsite wastewater system. The property has some history. Boise Cascade and then High Country Lumber operated a retail lumberyard on the site from 1966 to 1989. In 2006, the Board of County Commissioners found the existing landscape operation to be illegal non-conforming use and approved conditions on the business such as maximum number of employees, number of vehicles allowed on site, and hours of operation. In 2008, the community development department approved an administrative decision for activity envelope and site plan review. Part of that proposal was to replace the existing structures and the approval also approved a caretaker dwelling unit. The proposed replacement of the buildings complies with Section 9 of the code, which allows expansion, restoration, demolition, and replacement of legal non-conforming structures as long as the activity does not increase the non-conformity. The current owner of the property did not act on those approvals and the activity envelope and site plan approvals have lapsed. The landscaping business is closed and the property is now for sale. I'd like to turn it over to Andrew for our site visit.
Thanks, Leslie. So I'd like to just take you through the footage that we captured with the drone a few weeks ago. So first, we're going to go through a pair of videos showing an overview of the property, then some views of the neighboring properties, and then some view planes from the traffic on Highway 82 as well as the Rio Grande Trail. So you can see the existing buildings on the south end of the property and then there's Highway 82 and looking back to the vacant lot on the other side. And then we've got another video here showing the property and the neighbors on the north side as well.
I just want to say one thing. The, there's a, looks like a office trailer there, the green and white office trailer. That was put on the property by the previous tenants. It was recently, recently, a couple of months ago, moved outside of, it was put in the setback. It was moved out of the setback and it's not, it's not one of those structures there that has been part of the process. It will be removed, yeah.
So now we'll go through some photos of the neighboring properties. Here's a little zoomed in version of the map that Leslie just shared with us. And you'll notice the map in the top right corner. So here we can see the existing structures. We're viewing to the north right now. The northeast is on the right side there. We can see the trees separating the property. To the northwest, we can see where Nathan Lane, the next road that comes near the property. To the southwest, we have Highway 82. To the southeast, across Hogland Road, we've got another property, Leslie.
Roaring Fork Meadows.
Roaring Fork Meadows. So views from nearby, we wanted to highlight the Rio Grande Trail, which crosses Highway 82 right next to this property. So we can see the little parking area and then each of these three photos are slightly rotated, just views of the property across the highway. And in the picture in the top right, we can see where the bridge goes across. That's where the pictures were taken from to view the property. That's where the pictures were taken from to view the property. So along Highway 82, there is a berm on that side of the property. We can see there's a little bit of a gap towards the north end of the property, where the berm dips down a little bit, but these photos highlight the visibility from there. Also, keep in mind, the drone is off the ground, so that last picture in the bottom right is the best approximation of more of an eye-level view. That's about it. Thanks a lot, Leslie.
Thank you, Andrew.
I didn't even get airsick.
Do I have to do "Share my screen" again?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you'd like, I can share that presentation or those videos with you if you want to review.
I'm very familiar with this property.
I noticed your name on a couple of documents.
Yeah. Oh, you did?
2006 or something.
Yeah. Okay. So, the applicant proposes, this is regarding the text amendments. The applicant proposes to cultivate approximately three acres of the property for products to be used in an onsite distillery. Creating the term accessory agricultural use in the land use code allows cultivation of a farm product and processing that product on the same property. I provided in my memo texts from the application that explain the trend in small agricultural farm operations. Per staff's interpretation, there was not a definition in the code that supported this type of farm operation, and the allowed/prohibited and special review uses in the unclassified zone district did not support this proposal either. So this is the definition that the applicant is proposing to be added to the land use The P N Z adopted a minor edit to the definition of accessory agricultural use, and that is in red, "grown on the property." And this is an attempt to link the cultivation on the land to the production of farm products on the same parcel. This should be, I really want to emphasize this, because one of staff's findings is that this type of small farm operation with cultivation onsite is consistent with the goals of the Down Valley Comprehensive Plan, which is to incentivize property owners to preserve agricultural use on the property. In addition, allowing accessory agricultural use as a special use, special review use in the unclassified zone district enabled staff and the community to evaluate, you know, to evaluate the proposal to ensure that the proposed special use is appropriate and compatible with the neighborhood. This definition could be utilized in other zone districts, and adding it to another specific zone district would require a very similar review process, another code amendment process. But here, I have just the language of the unclassified zone district, and then how it would be amended with agricultural accessory use to be added as a special review. The P N Z and staff recommend approval of the proposed text amendments. So, the next part of your packet and part of this application is special use review. As I said in my memo, the applicant proposes to establish an agricultural-based distillery to distill produce, to distill, produce, and store the products onsite. The facility will use locally sourced ingredients and agricultural products grown onsite and from other area farms. The facility will be accessed by a private gate and generally not open to the public. All visitors will be registered guests to ensure compliance with access limitations. It is proposed that the land and facilities will be converted to a working farm with modernized agricultural equipment and buildings. The applicant is not seeking an expansion of the historical commercial use. The applicant is seeking a new special review use for a business enterprise engaging in farm product processing for the purpose of operating a distillery. The applicant proposes to utilize the existing activity zones that are defined in the 2006 B O C C approval. So these zones, these zones were part of, as I said, the 2006 B O C C resolution. So Zones A and B will be irrigated fields or support crop production through irrigation. Not all of A and B will be cultivated. Zone C will support the operation and, as of yet, the number of buildings that will be reconstructed. Zone D will be an administrative office building as well as parking and access. The applicant's proposal is a reduction in the number of FTEs and vehicles onsite than the previous B O C C approval. The applicant proposes six full-time employees and eight vehicles. In 2006, 20 full-time employees were approved and 22 vehicles onsite were approved. Deliveries of product and equipment will be made to the site. Therefore, during the P N Z review and after, we required the applicant to submit a traffic analysis based upon their business model. And S G M engineers did a traffic analysis, and they found that the estimated trip generation of this proposed use will be less than 25% of what was approved for the Four Seasons proposal, which was the 2006 approval. That report is found in Attachment F of your packet. The applicant also commits to maintaining the time limitations imposed in the 2006 approval. Those were 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, in Zones A and B, with the exception of irrigation and non-motorized maintenance on Saturday and Sunday. So Zones A and B is the exception with the irrigation and non-motorized maintenance on Saturday and Sunday. In the 2006 approval, there were no limitations on time of operation for Zones C and D, but the current P N Z approval limits truck deliveries in Zones C and D, no deliveries on Sunday, and only between 9:00 and 5:00 on Saturdays. Since the P N Z approval, May 19th, this public hearing has been publicly noticed. So in your packet, and since the packet went out, there's been a lot of public comment. Based upon the issues and questions from the public, I have endeavored to craft some conditions of approval that are in your resolution. They're not found in the P N Z resolution, but they're in your resolution. So understandably, the neighbors are feeling a bit burned from the last business on this property. The old and dilapidated buildings are still standing after the property owner committed to redeveloping the property, including landscaping and vegetative screening. This applicant, the applicant provided a construction schedule, Exhibit A of your resolution, and in the resolution, Conditions Number 2, 3, and 5(c) limit how far the operation can progress without buildings being demolished, landscaping installed, and irrigated fields restored. Offgassing of the distillery operation is also an understandable concern. Attachment F of your memo provides information on the technology that will be used. Condition Number 6 requires a final inspection of the distilling operation whereby the applicant shall demonstrate that the offgassing capture system has been installed. Water quantity and quality is a significant concern of the neighbors. Everybody out there is on a well. Condition Number 5, A and B, require the applicant to demonstrate to the county's satisfaction that there is enough water to support this operation, and that the disposal of gray water is achieved without affecting existing surface or groundwater. Because this is a special review, Conditions 11 and 12 require an annual B O C C review, and the review shall consider the success of the revegetation, irrigation, and new landscaping, landscape maintenance, any reports relating to odor and noise from the facility, any groundwater quality and quantity monitoring, any complaints received regarding retail use on the property, any complaints received regarding traffic specifically related to the S G M trip generation report, the memo dated July 13, 2020, and a confirmation that trip generation is less than 25% of what was approved in the B O C C resolution in 2006. Any complaints related to the specific restrictions of the special use approval as listed in Condition 9 of the resolution, and any deadlines for property improvements that have elapsed. So we would look for all of those to be put into a report that is submitted to staff and then is submitted to the B O C C for the annual review. As per Condition 13, the applicant shall be required to obtain another special review use approval after three years, or should any of the approved thresholds or any other material change in the operation take place. The P N Z recommends approval of the special use finding that the number of employees and vehicles are less than previously approved. The proposal is consistent with the Down Valley Comprehensive Plan, the interim guidelines of the Basalt 2020 Master Plan, and a compatible use with the adjacent neighborhood. Staff finds that this amendment to the code and special review use on eight acres in the unclassified zone district is consistent with the allowed and special review uses of the zone district. They are a mixture of uses. The allowed uses range from accessory buildings, animal production and husbandry services, farm buildings, crop production, playgrounds. The special review uses, the special review uses have items in here like commercial firewood, splitting, storage, and sales, logging, mineral exploration, mining, concrete batch plants. There's a retirement community, schools, and universities. So, the unclassified zone district is really a mixture of uses, and staff found that this proposal fits in with the uses of the classified zone, unclassified zone district. I am done with my presentation.
Yes.
I have questions, and I don't know if, Leslie, you can answer, or maybe the applicant when they give their presentation. I think a key point in, which was in Exhibit A, accessory agricultural use, was the addition of "grown on the property," that those, provided that the initial agriculture project, product grown on the property remains the principal ingredient or component. I think that's key, especially when you look at the number of deliveries that need to be made on a seasonal basis for products, or grown offsite or grown regionally or locally, because that's, that's 24, I think it's 20, it's a significant amount of deliveries that need to be made over a year's time span. It says seasonal, but they break it out into what that would mean over a year. And I'm really concerned about semi-trucks coming and going from that parcel because of noise, because of the odors emitted from semi-trucks, diesel, and safety coming and going from the highway. So I would like clarification, because it sounds really good when you say the initial product remains the principal ingredient or component with "grown on the property." Tells me that you would have less traffic coming and going to provide products that are being used in the distilling of whatever they're going to make at the end of the day. I know they need bottles delivered, and they need those kind of supplies, but that's kind of incidental. I mean, that's part of it, but this specifically "grown on the property" I think is important. So I'd like more clarification on that. And then that goes to my other concern about semi-trucks coming and going, because it says they're going to be, their product will be, whatever's delivered will be palletized, which usually means you need to have a forklift to take it off, and it's usually coming out of a larger truck, and in some cases, those are semis. And that, that's a concern to me. I mean, smaller trucks, maybe more deliveries in smaller trucks is better than, you know, fewer deliveries in semis when you're talking public safety and impacts to the neighborhood. So for right now, those are starting questions that I think the applicant might be able to address if you would like to.
Well, we'll let the applicant address that, I think, yeah.
And thank you.
George?
Thanks. Oh, just as a side note, Patty, could you not shuffle papers in front of the mic? It's really hard to hear.
Okay, sorry, George. I just have five mics in front of me, so it makes it hard.
I'm just saying.
I'll try and be more careful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just pretend it's wind and birds.
Well, that's a little, I could, I could try to pretend. Leslie, you start off saying that this property is for sale. So, the applicant, the current applicants are sort of testing the waters and seeing if this, this is going to pass, and if so, they may, they have a contract to purchase, or that's, the applicant can address that. I'm a little confused about that. Are we, you know, are we approving something that the property is going to be sold to someone else? You talked about, and we've gotten letters about water quantity and quality. One of our concerns that actually was noted in the master plan was that staff does not look at quality of the water. They may be able to look at quantity in terms of how much a well is producing, but they don't take into account quality. And we know certain parts of the county, the quality of the water is really poor, and as you're starting to draw down on more water, that quality could actually deteriorate further. So that's a concern of mine, and it always has been, even with the Emma Master Plan. The special review uses on a unconform, on a UC zoning, we've dealt with this in the past, and even though there's a lengthy list of possible uses, we're able to actually edit that down to what we feel would be appropriate uses for any particular property. An example of that was how we, the approval process with the Redstone Castle in terms of limiting the actual uses. So, just because all these uses are listed, doesn't mean that that's appropriate for any particular property. You note that the 2006 approval process that looked at number of employees, number of vehicles, looked at transportation studies. Well, that's, that's 15 years ago, and there's a lot that has changed in this mid-valley area, as well as the entire valley. So I don't believe that we should be actually looking or considering what was approved in 2006. That era has changed. And in fact, as you know, Leslie, staff is actually looking at revising the entire new Down Valley Master Plan specifically for this area in conjunction with the town of Basalt, which may have a whole new light on terms of usages in this area. So those are concerns of mine in terms of this entire application at this point.
Okay. Kelly or Greg?
Thank you. I was going to actually bring up what Patty had mentioned, just looking at the accessory agricultural use. I think it's an interesting and worthwhile text amendment, realizing I'm not entirely sure what the principal ingredient will be here, or what the secondary deliverable ingredients are, and how much water will be required, but that's, that's specific to the, to what the use is on this particular piece of property. I do have questions about that. I'm concerned about water. I'm concerned about access, the way Patty and George have described. So I want to hear more. The one thing I wanted to ask is that, it sounds as if the restrictions on the actual growing zone of the property, are those reasonable for somebody who's actually doing something agriculturally, that you can only show up on the property at 7:00 a.m. and work until 7:00 p.m.? Is that reasonable for a rancher, a farmer, a rancher in the summer, working in this part of the state? I'm worried it's too stringent. You know, if they need to get out there and do something at midnight because irrigation's overflowing, you know, are they going to be in violation of the rules? So I was wondering if that is a reasonable or unreasonable regulation on the piece of property. I am concerned about the activity on the property, and knowing that this applicant just has a- has a, it sounds like they have a contract to buy it. And if it doesn't go their way, maybe they'll walk on the contract so they can get this approval and sell it to the next guy who may want to grow and distill something entirely different, as far as I know. So I'm a little nervous about it and I'm not sure how to proceed, although I appreciate the effort that they're making here and I'm hoping we can answer these questions.
Kelly?
Thank you. I think I have one question for Leslie and then my other questions the applicant can try to address in their presentation. Leslie, I'm, I'm wondering, was discussed with the applicant just rezoning this to one of our, you know, standard zone districts, A R ten, rather than maintaining this unclassified zone that sort of seems, I don't know, like it's just tangential right now or just a leftover remnant from, from past zoning decisions?
I can answer that question with regard to the kind of queries we got when this property went on the market. People were really looking at, and this applicant is included, as to what is the existing zoning and what can we do within the existing zoning? Or how can we take what was the previously approved use and tweak it or expand it a little bit without coming in with something completely new? Staff took a lot of inquiries on this property when the property went on the market. And at the time, Basalt had started their master plan update and Picken County was involved in this area, the stretch of the highway was originally part of that update. And then Picken County decided to pull that out. And as George mentioned, start another land use process of this section, basically from Old Snowmass, Snowmass Conoco, down to the Basalt Town Boundary. And so we, until that master plan process is done, we're not, we don't know how to, we didn't know how to guide a potential applicant on rezoning the property and what to rezone the property to. So we were trying to be very conservative to potential buyers. Well, this is what the approval is. This is what the zone district is. You can do, you can do what you want within the zone district, but until we have this master plan completed, rezoning or completely changing the zone district, even the unclassified zone district, didn't make sense to us. So this applicant felt that they were within kind of what the zone district allowed, crop production, ag buildings, farm uses. And then adding the accessory agricultural use to the code made more sense to them. And I will say, we, we, of the inquiries that we got, we did not get any inquiries in this applicant, this applicant in this application did not propose rezoning the property to A R ten, which is what the surrounding zone district is, or A H P U D even.
Anything else, Kelly?
Okay. Explaining that. Yeah, I'm, just some additional questions related to water. I'm a little confused by what I read about what, whether they're taking water from the ditch or taking water from the well, or if they're planning to take water from both and for what different purposes. And so I'd like to understand that a little bit better. I also note with regards to water in the referral letter from the Roaring Fork Fire Rescue, that they additionally need to have a permanent hydrant. And I'd like to just understand what that requirement is a bit better and if that's been agreed to yet and confirmed. And then finally, with regards to the on-site water treatment system, is this area within the service area of the Basalt Sanitation District, and does that option exist for discharge? Thanks.
The option for running a sewer line to this property is, does not exist.
It's too far out of the district.
It's too far out of the district and Suzanne or Cindy could probably weigh in on this with the facilities at Lazy Glen as well.
It's a long discussion.
Okay, Greg or Greg?
Just getting back to water. Thanks for that, Kelly. I think one of the concerns I have is certainly an operation that's depleting or endangering the water supply for the neighbors. Clearly, they're concerned about it. We've seen their correspondence. Is this a situation where water might need to be trucked in in order to maintain? I know the, the grow facility down the road, I believe, is trucking water. Maybe they still are and that's just part of their operation. And I'm thinking if they're distilling some product here that really requires a taste and a flavor and something unique, it's possible that trucking water in is part of their plan and would be necessary, just, you know, pure spring water, something like that, that they're not going to get on site. I'm just wondering if they can address that when the time comes.
Steve? We'll let them address that.
George and then Patty.
Thanks. Just reminded me of another question. We talked about that the distillery would not be open to the public, although guests would be allowed. So I'm a little confused about that. Are we, are we, in the application or your recommendations, are you specifically removing the ability to have any commercial retail operation, tasting operation?
Yes, that's the intent.
Okay.
Yeah, George, that was one of my questions, too. I needed further information on that. There's no tours. I, I think that if it's close to the public, it's close to the public because either that or we need a more defined plan for, we're going to have one tour a month on a Tuesday, you know, like, kind of like we did with the Redstone Castle. We really limited because of traffic issues and disturbance to the neighborhood. So that's one thing. And when it, another thing, when it comes to the odor, we had a very strict requirement across the street and it's not a matter of it should not have odors, it will not have odors emitted from either the distilling or the growing or et cetera, the wastewater, the reprocessing and making fertilizer, which I think is a great idea, but those things may be accompanied by odors that that neighborhood was already impacted from highway odors just from traveling traffic. And I don't want to add anything more to it. So it will not emit odors from any part of the distilling process. There was also a concern raised by a neighbor about, you know, reaping the grain if they're going to be growing grain there and the dust created from that when you harvest and, you know, grains. And that wasn't really clarified. What are they actually, like Greg was saying, what are they actually growing? What crop part of this are they growing on site? We don't know what the end result is, what kind of product they're distilling. I mean, potatoes are beautiful when they're in bloom and they don't create dust, but I don't know if they're, we don't know what process, what end result is. And I know there might be some proprietary or something issues there, but we need to have more information on that if we're going to protect and, and recognize the concerns of the neighbors.
Okay, and I have a series of questions for Leslie or issues. Some of them are going to require some research to bring back at
Okay.
the next, next hearing. The first is, there are two driveways proposed. The one driveway was shut down, I think in two thousand and seven, the one closest to Highway eighty-two. They're proposing to use that. It seems to me that it's too close to Highway eighty-two for safety that there, there could be, it could potentially create a bottleneck of the traffic coming off of Highway eighty-two, getting backed up clear of the highway. And so I would propose that they only be allowed one driveway, the one being farther up the road, to access the administrative building, the distillery, the deliveries and all that in one driveway, further away from the highway. But I want to know if there's any rules about how close the driveway off of Hoagland is in relation to where it's coming off of Highway eighty-two. Seems like there's safety concerns there. The statement, the grown on the property phrase, I was thinking, I mean, I think it came from the P N Z, but then one place in there had said, you were the one that wrote it in as if it had come from you. But I just want to verify, was it the P N Z that came up with that?
It was my recommendation to P N Z, just to, just to make sure that there is product being grown on the, on the property that is used in the distillery.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
But the P N Z adopted it.
I'm, I want to know why all the other land around there was rezoned, but this one little parcel was not rezoned? And is this the only parcel in the whole county that is, I mean, that's what it states in the packet? That is unclassified?
Yes.
And I'm, I'm curious, why was it not rezoned when other parcels were all in the immediate neighborhood?
Can I get back to you on that?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah. No, I don't, I don't expect all the answers right now, but I want to know.
From previous approvals on this property, I think it was because of the existing uses on the property from the lumberyard to et cetera, that it was already special. But you might want to verify that. But I think that's why it wasn't rezoned to, you know.
Yeah, and there's other non-conforming commercial uses down the highway that are kind of similar to the lumberyard use.
Yeah, and they, and they have a weird zoning, too, that stretch.
They were sort of grandfathered in. It's kind of that same issue, but all those lands were rezoned and this one wasn't. So I'm curious about that. Does the accessory ag use definition, does that apply to all the other zone districts where agriculture is allowed also? And not just to this? Or does they need, does it need to be called out for a definition in all of the other districts specifically?
Right. So the definition, accessory agricultural use would go into the code. But right now, it's only being added to the unclassified zone district as a special review. So if, if you approve this definition in the code, another property on another zone district could ask to apply this in, in the zone district that they are in.
Okay. So conceivably, we could approve this definition of, a new definition of accessory agricultural use?
Yes.
We could apply it to this zone district, but then not approve the
Right. Yeah.
The special use review. I just want to make sure, that's what I was thinking were our possibilities. Another thing that would probably require some research, you could bring it back at the next hearing. It's sort of implied that this land would be zoned A R ten if it were to be rezoned. And I'm just curious what, what uses in A R ten are allowed by right and by special review? Is it similar? Is it way, way different than this?
Well.
So that, that would be
Okay.
Something I'd want to have answered. My thinking is the county should be rezoning this land to some other zone district and just get rid of the unclassified one. I don't know how that affects this application or if we could do that as part of this, but to me, that's the logical thing to do, to get rid of that, that one unclassified zone district and rezone it something else. But then that's, if it were rezoned, then what would somebody be allowed to do on that property is kind of what I want, want to know. They might be able to do all the same things, but I don't know. And my final question, it has to do with the water rights from the Kester ditch in different places in the application. The applicant says they have water rights from the Kester ditch. One of the public comments say that they do not have water rights from the Kester ditch. So I just want to have, from whatever source, a clarification. Now, if they don't have water rights from the Kester ditch, it would be extremely difficult to do agriculture thing on the three or four acres in the, on the Down Valley side of the property. So they're, they're, they're banking their, their whole operation on being able to irrigate that land and grow a crop on it. But if they don't have water right from the Kester ditch, that's, that, that wouldn't be possible. So I just want to, I want to see it in the writing and the deeds or whatever if they did get some of that water right. Now, I guess I should do a public disclosure, too, that I have bucked bales on that exact piece of land with Johnny Hoagland back in the nineteen sixties. I've seen Johnny Hoagland irrigating that land with Kester ditch water, which it used to irrigate all of what is now Holland Hills. So, and I've cleaned ditch through the, the Kester ditch, going through that whole property there in the past. So I'm really, you know, very familiar with the land and its past history, going back before Johnny Hoagland sold it and the lumberyard went in. So.
So I miss that in my history.
That goes back even farther, farther than putting in the lumberyard for the use of the land. It used to be used for something totally different.
Well, I know that the applicant does have their water attorney online today to answer a lot of these water rights questions for you.
And the reason, just to note, the reason why water is being trucked into the grow site across the street is because of federal issues related to marijuana crops and the ability to use those water rights that are granted by the federal government. That hasn't been cleared up because marijuana is illegal at the federal level. That's why they have to truck in water to the grow site.
So that's all my questions for you. Any other questions for Leslie before we move on from the board? And we can ask questions later, obviously. So seeing none, thank you, Leslie, and we'll move on to the applicant's presentation. And I see Luke, Luke Bomberger on there. And I presume he'll be doing the presentation.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks, everyone. My name is Luke Bamberger and I'm with Anderson Mason Dale Architects in Denver. Let me share my screen here. Are you seeing my PowerPoint here?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. One second. There we go. Okay, can you hear it now?
Yes, we, and we see the
Well, we see it starting.
Well, the screen is split now. We, we don't see anything on it yet.
Okay. Sorry about this.
Oh, we see Denver.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, you see it? All right, great. Thank you so much for your patience here. As I mentioned, I am with Anderson Mason Dale Architects in Denver and I'm representing Matt Patel and the Emma Fields Distillery. AMD is a sixty-person firm that's been working in the Rocky Mountain West for over forty-five years. And we are familiar with your neighborhood up there. We are currently finishing We are currently finishing three buildings, uh, the Mount College Spring Valley Campus, a State Center, and a Rec Center. Specifically to this project, our goal is to make Emma Fields Distillery a beautiful agrarian distillery that is an amenity to the Roaring Fork Valley, with architecture that fits into its context through scale, materials, and form. It's a similar process that we use for all our projects. They're context-driven, they want to fit in with their surroundings, their neighbors, both from a scale and material perspective. This is especially important in this, on this project because it's such a picturesque place there in the Roaring Fork Valley, and it's also very important to our client. Dr. Patel and the distillery really wants to impart this agrarian experience, and it's going to be part of their brand, part of their story. Over the last month or two, we have reached out to the neighbors and the adjacent HOAs, and we have heard their concerns, and frankly, these are concerns that we have as well. Obviously, we rely on water for our product, so the water needs to be clean. We don't want to disturb the groundwater with what we do. We don't want to deplete the groundwater through our use of the well. So we have a great team assembled that are helping us work through, working through these issues. Obviously, we want to address the concerns about traffic generation, light pollution, noise pollution, any sort of odors that are coming off the distilling process, and we can touch on some of those issues here further into the presentation. I think Matt might want to touch on those after we talk to the water engineer and the But with that in mind, obviously, we are looking at this in a very sustainable manner. While we're on the slide, I will just touch on the entrance to the site. We have slightly updated our conceptual master plan of the site based on some input from the planning and zoning folks. And we have just the one driveway up at the end of the site further from Highway eighty-two. This is included in your packet. These are some conceptual massings, just to give us an idea of kind of the size scale and the dispersment of the buildings on the property. Leslie has touched on the breakdown between zones A, B, C, and D, so we don't need to go into that too much here. But as I mentioned, we have very high sustainability goals for this project. We are going to pursue LEED Silver Certification, which is going to set us up as a distillery in a pretty unique fashion. There's probably only a half dozen or so distilleries in the country that are LEED certified. And this will hold us accountable, not only during construction, but also during operations, to make sure that we are very sustainable in our approach to the project. This is in the packet too. It's a, we're looking at a similar system to this that actually captures off-gassing, odors, everything, and we can then take the CO2 that comes off this fermentation process and sell it to other industries. And just to kind of reiterate our sustainability approach, you know, it's a big part of the story of the distillery itself, but we also feel it's very important just from the perspective of being good neighbors, not only in the valley, but in, in the state and, you know, in, in the world we share. With that, I'm going to introduce a couple of our team members. Alan Leek is a, an engineer from Respect in Denver, and he is looking at our water quality and quali- quantity issues. And then also Mary Elizabeth Geiger, who is our water attorney, out of Garfield and Heck in Glenda Springs. So I'll hand it over now to Alan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Alan Leek. I'm a professional engineer with the company of Respect in Denver, Colorado. I've been doing water resources, water and wastewater and water rights work for over thirty-eight years within Colorado. Also, one of my colleagues in our office recently joined us, and she worked for Metro Wastewater for eight years handling their biosolids operation. And really specifically, what I want to address is the water supply concerns. You know, as Luke mentioned, you know, a key aspect of this project is environmental stewardship and water conservation. So we definitely want to minimize how much water we have to pump, minimize how much we consume, and then minimize the wastewater that's generated from the facility itself. On the screen, it shows the existing wells as proposed to be used for the water supply. You know, this well's been tested up to twenty gallons per minute, but based on the proposed water demands for the facility, the average well pumping from that well would be about four gallons per minute. And at that rate, I believe there's little risk impact to adjacent wells due to several factors. First of all, the, the well is eighty foot deep, has a, a water table of about forty foot deep, and it's located near the Roaring Fork River, and the water level in the well is pretty close to what the water level is in the Roaring Fork River. And thus, most likely, the supply for water coming to that well when it's pumped is from the Roaring Fork through the alluvium itself. The well itself's located almost six hundred feet from any adjacent well itself, with the closest being the five hundred and say forty feet to the northeast and uphill of the subject wells. And, and the groundwater in this area flows basically from the south and southeast to the west and northwest, so draining from where that closest well is draining to the northwest. That well is hundred and sixty foot deep, has a static water level of about seventy feet, and when it was originally pumped, it pumped over twenty-seven gallons per minute and only dropped the water table about five feet. So, so based on that, it would appear that there is sufficient groundwater in that entire area to support this operation. Of course, that well itself is located downstream of the Kessler ditch and likely benefited from seepage losses from the ditch itself. One note regarding the six hundred foot, you know, the state engineer uses that as a distance at which well interference is presumed not to occur. So for the state engineer to typically come and permit a well at the existing well location, this is the only well that they would look at to say, maybe there isn't that presumption for that location. The wells to the northwest are all located more than six hundred feet from the subject well, and actually, they are all closer to the Roaring Fork River than they are to this existing well. So looking at that information, looking at the geologic logs from the wells, it's my professional opinion that the proposed use of the existing well for this facility at the rates proposed will not significantly impact the water wells in the vicinity of the well itself. Regarding water quality, you know, the proposed facilities will include an onsite wastewater treatment facility, treat the wastewater from the distilling process, and after internal recycling, it will discharge water quality concentrations that are below the limits that are going to be required by the Colorado Water Quality Control Commission regulations for reuse of treated effluent for irrigation purposes. The intent of those regulations are specifically in place to protect the beneficial uses of groundwater and protect groundwater quality. Irrigation use from that wastewater stream is going to be supplemental to the irrigation use of the water from the Kessler ditch for the agricultural purposes. An onsite wastewater treatment system, as you might think of a septic system, in this place would be designed not to impact the quality of groundwater, as this is the very groundwater that the operation is going to be using to produce its distilled products. So, you know, this project, they definitely don't want to contaminate the groundwater, which is the source of the water for this facility. Last, you know, in order to minimize the impact to the distillery on the environment, the Class A biosolids generated from this facility are planned to be used as amendments in the agricultural fields. The application of these biosolids is regulated by the state and will be applied at ergonomic rates and in compliance with the state's regulations for use of biosolids. The application of Class A biosolids have been found in many other places to be protective of groundwater and a very good environmental use of that waste product. For my part of the presentation in closing, you know, the goal of this project is to be environmentally protective, friendly, and through water conservation, water reuse, and beneficial application of waste products that promotes the preservation of agricultural uses while minimizing any impact to the environment and the adjacent residential and other uses. That is the end of my presentation. I'd like to turn it over to Mary Elizabeth Geiger to specifically address your water rights concerns.
Hi, good afternoon, Chairman and members of the commission. So I, I don't have a lot to add because Alan really covered pretty much everything, but I, you did have some questions about the Kester ditch and whether there are water rights associated with this property. I have not done a full-blown, all the way back to the eighteen hundreds title search, but the, there, there are water rights associated with this property. There are deeds that go with this property for the Kester ditch. It, when, in two thousand and six, when Four Seasons went through this process to get their approvals, that I understand they didn't follow through on, but at that time, it did include use of the Kester ditch for irrigation of about three to four acres. That's, you know, the continued proposal here. So that's going to be the main source of irrigation, as Alan was talking about. Then also, somebody had mentioned or questioned about trucking water, and I think it was Commissioner Clapper that maybe had clarified that that was because of the federal regulations with regard to marijuana and the inability to use water out of Rudy reservoir as augmentation water. In this instance, that won't be an issue. This property is within the saltwater conservancy district's Area A. So if, if this goes forward and is approved, if there's a need for additional augmentation water to cover the uses, then that'll be a perfunctory application to the basalt district to get that. There already is an existing basalt contract for this well for commercial use. So I think that's probably all I have to add at this time, unless anybody has any questions. I don't know if you guys want to wait till we finish the full presentation, or if anybody wants to chime in on water right now.
So, Mary, I, this is Steve Child, the chairman, with regards to the Kester ditch water right. Is it a, is it an amount that they would get the, a certain full amount of water for a limited amount of time every couple of weeks, or is it a small amount of water that they would have continuously?
Uh, well, there, this ditch is not incorporated, if that's kind of what you're asking. To the best of my knowledge, at this point, I, there's not any agreement for, or, you know, requirements for rotation or reduction. I, you know, as the goal is though to conserve water, you know, there's not a, they're not going to be flood irrigating this, they're going to be sprinkler irrigating, you know, from the ditch. So it, it would, obviously, if the water right, if there's, goes out of priority and can't be used, it can't be used, you know, after a date certain. But it's a pretty, it's a pretty good water right. And, you know, they would be using it conservatively, but there's not a rotation or a limitation that I'm aware of.
Okay, so I, it really amounts, the question is about sharing the water with the neighbors, what protocol, how much water would be avail- available for how long on this property, and that maybe is yet to be determined?
I, yes, I think, you know, there probably, and it's been a while because it's, you could tell this, you know, the property hasn't been actively used for years, but I am sure there will be discussions with the neighbors. I'm sure the neighbors, other users of the ditch, you know, are intentioned to be a good neighbor and to work with folks to make sure that we don't disrupt, you know, usage while at the same time, this property is entitled to water, though three to four acres of irrigation's not a time.
Uh-huh, okay. George?
Oh, thanks, Steve. Just to follow up on your question, do we know, historically, has there ever been a call on the ditch?
Uh, you know, that's a good question. I can easily look that up. So I, I can probably do that while we're finishing up this and circle back with you, George, if you want me to do that, I'm happy to.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
And George, to my knowledge, never has. It's, it's a really good senior water right out of the Roaring Fork.
It is.
Kelly?
My apologies if I'm missing something, but I think before second reading, I would really like to actually see the water engineering studies and how recent those are to this well, as well as the information about, you know, the water right associated with this. And I couldn't even glean from the application, like, how much water is proposed to be used. And I think all of that is, you know, sounds like it's available for review and documentation, you know, fights over half of the FS of water. I mean, we, you know, we take the use and every drop pretty seriously, so I, I know for me, I'm going to really want to look at that more thoroughly between now and second reading. I would just ask that you please forward that on Leslie's file review.
Oh, absolutely, we can do that.
Patty?
So this is kind of far-fetched thinking, but I'm thinking far-fetched right now. The mention of the well and the water table, and it draws.
Amen.
Technically from the Roaring Fork. As we well know, because of our, our in-stream water, the risa that we have, that's a section of the river that tends to get very dry from about Holland Hills, you know, from the, the bridge, the pedestrian bridge, the old train, train track.
Yeah.
Down to the confluence of the frying pan. So I, I don't know if there's an issue, if they actively start taking water from, I know there's two wells on this site, if we're going to see any rebound to water levels in the Roaring Fork, if it's drawing from that water table. Kind of far-fetched, but we have been really working hard to protect that stretch of the river, and I don't want to see us approving something that might possibly create another impact that we're going to have to be addressing further down river from there.
Okay.
Sorry, I was pressing the right, I was pressing the wrong button there. I can speak quickly if you'd like me to. I, I, I definitely understand those concerns. I don't think there are two well permits for this property. There's, one of those wells has been plugged and is not in use. The well that is in use has been in existence since nineteen sixty-seven, I believe, and I, I again realize it hasn't been pumped on a regular basis in recent time, but the good news is, as I was discussing earlier, with the availability of water from Rudy through the basalt water conservancy district, you know, we have the ability to release water, which I know is going to be downstream a bit, but I just don't think that this use, what, especially once you see the numbers, and Alan can speak a bit more to this, but it's going to have any direct effect on that water table, especially at pumping four gallons per minute. any direct effect on that water table, especially at pumping four gallons per minute.
Well, I appreciate that information, but maybe it ties into with what Kelly was saying as far as when we see the numbers of actual water use. And you're right, it hasn't been used for a while, but we're not actually sure how much was used, when it was used, and we understand the augmentation issues out of Rudi, but you're absolutely right again, it comes after the fact of when we need it, which is above the confluence. So, just information that can come back to us at second reading, just to clear that concern.
Okay. I'll send it back to you, I think, Luke, at this time. You're somehow muted. You're not coming through. On the screen, it says, "Connecting to a..." dot-dot-dot. I don't know what that means.
Audio dot-dot-dot.
So, we're not hearing you, Luke. I think you need to reconnect somehow. There, I think we got you.
No.
No, we're still not hearing you.
I love technology.
Well, while you're waiting for that, this is Alan Luke. I just looked up the diversion records for Kessler Ditch, and basically, since 1954, there have been diversions in almost every month of the typical agricultural time period, from May through October.
So, we don't know why we can't get Luke?
Try talking now, Luke.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. I was on my phone for a while, and now it wants me to go through the computer, so. So, just looking through my notes, I think there were a couple of questions regarding the access by trucks. Included in your packet of information is the memo from SGM, and what we provided to them was some information from a distillery of a comparable size, and that it fits with the business model that Matt has put together, and they base their numbers off of that. So, in terms of delivery of products, yes, you're correct, there will be grain and other distilling products coming from neighboring farms. I would say that, at this point, I'm not sure that they'll be coming in on semis. I think they would be better suited to be coming in on box trucks, that type of thing, on pallets. We've visited other distilleries, kind of in preparation for the work on this site, and that's how they do it. I didn't see anything coming in on semis. It seems pretty easy to bring in, they call them supersacks, they're just sacks of grain that is processed off-site, it comes on a pallet, pull it off of the pallet jack, it's pretty straightforward. And you do warehouse this product and bring it out when you need it, and I think the numbers that we put in were deliveries every two weeks or so on this type of product. Just looking through my notes here, for other questions, a lot of the water issues have been talked about, and we will come back with more information for the second reading on a lot of those. I think your comments about public use are very appropriate. We're not seeking public use of the property, but I know Matt has explored the idea of having private tours on occasion, so please let us know your thoughts on that, and if you feel like there might need to be restrictions on that. It's, a public tasting room and a commercial sales room is not part of Matt's business plan for this property, I know that much. He would like to have folks be able to come in and do some tastings on occasion, just strictly by invitation only. Let's see. Odors, yes, like I touched on before, we're very concerned about those, and, you know, I think Leslie, in your restrictions that you've put in place within the language of this special review use, I think that will hold us accountable and make sure that we adhere to those restrictions in terms of odor from the distillery, dealing with wastewater, dealing with the waste stream, that type of thing. I think that's really about it on our part. I appreciate all your time, I know it's been a long day, and I'm sure there's a number of folks on the phone waiting to comment from the public side, so.
I was going to just add something very quickly to follow up on the water, that this was, you know, doing a little looking and actually hearing from Paul Noto, who may be on the phone right now, there, the Kessler ditch is incorporated, which means obviously we would then, and I apologize for that, Chairman, for being misspeaking in that regard, but then we'll be bound by the rules and regs of the ditch company, which in some respects makes things easier because it means everything's set up with the neighbors already, so.
Okay, questions from the board for the applicant and all your different presenters. So, George first.
No, thanks. Luke, so, one of the key questions, what's the crop and what's the end product?
I know Matt might want to weigh in on this, it's part of his business plan. He's talked about, to me, gin, whiskey, vodka, and he's talked about, and he's researched heavily the planting winter wheat on the site, but that hasn't been fully vetted. He's also talked about potentially some botanicals being grown on the site that would go into the gin.
Okay, so we don't really know.
Well, I don't know if Matt wants to chime in on that, but that's, those are the products he's mentioning in his business.
I mean, you're asking us to approve something that we have no idea what we're approving. I have a problem with that.
Sure. No, I mean, it's those three products, it's vodka, it's gin, and it's whiskey.
But what crop?
At this point.
Okay, Patty?
Yeah, I think the crop is key, George, what you said. I mean, if you're growing potatoes for vodka, it's a whole different thing as far as the environment, the odor, the, any other issues, dust from like a wheat crop, et cetera. So, I think that's key, and in thinking about the crop issue, there was concern from neighbors about pesticide use, and we weigh heavily in on that, on other issues, as far as environmental impacts from not just a one-time watering, you know, using pesticides on your pot on your front porch, I didn't mean marijuana, I meant your planted pot on your front porch, versus, you know, treating a whole three to four acres of crop with pesticides with the proximity to the Roaring Fork River and the water table. So, I think we need to have that clarified. And Luke, you were really clear on no retail and no tastings, but then you said tastings by invitation, so we need clarification on that. So, just because we want to make sure that it doesn't become a routine thing by invitation, because that is another additional impact to the neighbors. So, just clarification on those things, and, yeah, because, you know, growing, I mean, producing, it's very different from vodka to gin to whiskey, it's a very different process of what your ingredients and preference on the board's part of which one of us likes vodka, gin, or whiskey.
I agree.
Okay, we'll go to George, you maybe have a follow-up to this, and then we'll go to you, Greg.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. The other question I have, Luke, is you talked about getting the additional product from neighboring ranches and farms. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. From what I've heard from Matt, he has reached out to some other farmers in the area, in the Roaring Fork Valley and the near vicinity, and he started the dialogue with them on potentially leasing fields and growing his product for this. So, part of the plan is to engage and, you know, encourage and support local farmers in this endeavor. So, he's looking close to the site for other options for growing, because it's, we can't grow everything we need on three acres. Three acres is a small parcel, but we do want to grow some of the product that is used on the three acres in the final product, and we want to be able to support the local growers and be able to include their product in our final product.
Yeah, maybe a question from Leslie, because, again, the verbiage that the applicant came up with in terms of accessory agriculture use, and I think Patty hit on this early on, was that provided that the initial agricultural product grown on the property remains a principal ingredient or component, so as you said, you're not going to be able to grow everything on two, three acres, but what percentage are we looking at, and what percentage are you going to have to bring in from the outside to comply with this proposed verbiage?
Sure. I don't know if I can speak very clearly on the percentages. I don't know if Matt can chime in on that, but, you know, I would say, you know, more than half of the product is going to come from off-site, is coming from other growers. I'd say it's definitely less than half. What we want to do is create the sense of, you know, an agrarian farm-to-bottle distillery and, you know, show kind of the life cycle of the product, you know, how it's grown, how it's processed, how it's distilled, and how it's ultimately turned into the finished product. So, you can see that all on one site. Not all the grain is going to be grown on-site, we will state that, you know, clearly. I'm sure more than half of the grain will be coming from off-site.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Greg?
Yeah, great, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Yeah, the impression I got certainly is that three acres is really a show crop, and I'm concerned, it's funny, coincidentally, I had a conversation with some local farmers and ranchers recently announced about growing grains here, and why didn't we have that much grain grown? They said the biggest issue is processing and threshing it, all those sort of processes that it takes to actually get a grain ready to be used, oats, for instance, or maybe barley or rye, or, and I also had some background with the guys growing potatoes for the vodka down at Woody Creek, and I do know they're bringing a lot of potatoes in from faraway places. I know they grow some locally, which is great, it's admirable, but I'm concerned you're going to, you may be importing your grains from faraway places where grain is grown, and I don't think that involves our valley, but I don't know that, I'm not an expert. I'd love to ask, if we could, just about the energy conservation, I haven't heard of lead silver in quite a while, quite honestly, the terminology we're using now is net zero, and we're challenging people to go for net zero. They're going to build a facility that's a showcase property. This is the place, and this is the opportunity to do something that wows everybody and sets the bar high. We only have RMI about three miles down the road to demonstrate that it's completely doable to make a net positive building. That location might be an ideal spot to do something. So, I think, I'd love to understand why lead silver, honestly, it's been about 10 years since I've heard about lead silver, so I'm just thinking, hey, raise the bar. I'd like to challenge you and let us know, because really, if this is a showcase property, that's what it's going to take around here. We've got a pretty sophisticated audience, and we're making really high demand on people that are coming to us regarding our energy code. So, I'd love to hear more, I'm open-minded on it, but that's kind of where I'm coming from. Regarding what you're growing there, I saw wildlife policy not applicable, but I thought, wow, if you're growing grain, are you going to get crows? What comes in with the various things you grow? Maybe that's not an issue, but it'd be interesting to know just what's being grown there and how much. You know, it's an intriguing thought, we're all, I think we're all in favor of trying to see more production of local foods and local products here, so I'm enthusiastic about it, but I do share the same questions as everyone else, and I'm worried about the water, you know? I hope that's good water down there, I'm sure people say it is. Is it good enough to put into a high-quality product without, you know, serious work on it? I don't know. Thanks.
Yep.
Kelly, you have any questions?
I was just going to follow up, if it's okay, with Commissioner Question's question about the water quality. We have done water quality tests on the well, both at, directly at the source, the well itself, as well as, you know, a spigot, and the water quality is actually quite good. That's one of the main reasons for the interest in this property is how great the water quality is.
Glad to hear it, thank you for telling us that.
Okay, and I have a couple of questions and comments. First of all, in terms of growing wheat, there used to be a lot of dryland wheat grown in the Roaring Fork Valley, down by Rifle, up towards Meeker, up towards Craig. I think all of that went into the Conservation Reserve Program, CRP, was highly erodible. I don't think anybody grows winter wheat, dryland anymore. There might be a few people growing irrigated wheat, but by and large, if people are growing any grain, it's a nurse crop for replanting alfalfa. That's not to say that some farmers in the Roaring Fork Valley wouldn't convert some of their hay ground to growing irrigated grain again, but I suspect your grain is probably going to be coming from the eastern plains of Colorado, or some, you know, far distance, maybe down by Grand Junction or Delta County, they grow a lot of grain there also. Let's see, I should have written this other question down, now it's slipping my mind.
It'll come to you.
My senior moment here. Dang. It'll come back to me here in a minute, but right now, I can't remember what my other question was going to be. So, let's see. If there are no other questions from the board right now, I think it's time to go to public comment. And so, I will open the public hearing, and we have a long list of people on here, and now, a question for Andrew, is that the order that people connected at all, that you have on the screen?
No, when they raise their hands, it will move them up, as well as the folks that we've already included will be towards the top, so we may have, in general, the people we saw.
Okay, so I'm going to call on Paul Noto first, who is a water attorney, and he might be able to answer some of the questions or ask other questions. So, Paul, welcome to our meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So, I have a few points to make, and some of which are just clarification. So, I represent a couple of the neighbors of Holden Ranch Holdings and Roaring Fork Meadows Homeowners Association, and so, one of the points I wanted to make is that the water augmentation contract that the applicant currently holds, or the owner holds, was from 2009, and it's for a warehouse use that they had planned at that time. We haven't yet seen any analysis of what the distilling use would require in terms of water quantity from the aquifer, and whether or not the existing water augmentation contract is sufficient to cover that use. Another point of clarification is that any water augmentation contract from Rudi Reservoir obviously is not replacing water to the local surrounding wells. So, we'd... So we'd like to see analysis of how much water the distilling process will use, and whether or not the augmentation as it exists is sufficient. We also heard from the applicant's engineer that an average pumping rate would be about four gallons a minute, but the way these things typically work is that you're not pumping water continuously 24/7, rather you're pumping a larger amount for a shorter period of time for when you need the water. So how much, what is your instantaneous pumping rate? What's the greatest amount of that? And also, you know, if the distilling is going to be pumping, say, I'll throw out some numbers that are just hypothetical, 20 gallons a minute for, you know, 10 hours, what's the impact to the local aquifer? I will note that to say that this aquifer is, is just fine without analysis is, in my mind, insufficient, because just across the road, my firm was involved in a very contentious well spacing hearing for the marijuana grow, and that well, which is right next to the river, did cause neighboring wells to go dry. And so they were not allowed to increase their well pumping to support the, the grow facility and rather had to switch from, to pumping from the river. The other issue that I noticed was that the applicant's engineer presented what we call a 600-foot spacing map. Basically, you, you draw a 600-foot radius circle around the proposed well and, and see what wells are within that radius. But the location that the applicant is using for that well is different than the well permit itself. And so the question is why? Because when you use the permitted location, you actually draw in a few more wells to within that 600-foot circle, including wells owned by my clients. The other point that I'd like to make is that because we have all of these complex water issues, which are generally hashed out in the state well permitting hearing, we think that the applicant should have to go through the well permitting process before we get too far down the road in land use approvals and hearings. Basically, let's make sure that the well permitting is final before we're granting land use approvals.
Okay.
And that's all I have at this point.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Appreciate your comments. And Paul actually asked the question that was the one I couldn't remember about the 600-foot distance, so I don't have to answer, ask that question again. Okay, looking at Michael Kopp, you have your hand up, we'll call on you next.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, great, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm commenting as a concerned neighbor. I live in Holland Hills. I actually received a letter about the meeting today, indicated my house is within 300 feet of the Emma Fields property, and therefore I was notified. Also, I hold a position as a member of the Board of Directors for the Holland Hills Metro District. And so in the Metro District, we manage water supply for the neighborhood. That consists of well water that's used for household consumption, also for our fire suppression, so that well water feeds our fire hydrants that are located throughout the neighborhood. We also manage the Kessler ditch irrigation water. And we do have senior water rights for Kessler ditch irrigation water. Regarding the Metro District, a, a letter was sent to Leslie on July 6th, so I believe that's in the packet. That summarizes the district's position on the application. Specifically, we do have concerns about the water. You know, and I think, you know, primarily it's about consumption, so, so what we've not heard is just how, how much consumption is planned by the distillery. We're, we're consuming, or, or we're, we're assuming it's a significant amount. You know, the primary ingredient in liquor is water. I, I would also challenge the, the statement we heard earlier about wells being located within 600 feet. So a, as I mentioned, I, I got a letter indicating I'm within 300 feet of the property, and I can tell you the Holland Hills well is adjacent to my property. So I would expect it's also within 300 feet of the Emma Fields property. It may be more than 600 feet from the actual well location, but, but so it shouldn't be by, by much. Also, our well does lie at roughly the same distance from the river. Our, our assumption is that we do share the same underground aquifer as the Emma Fields property. And, and so I, I think the, the concern is, you know, I, I heard a lot of comments from the, the Emma group about opinions of, of why their water usage would not affect the neighbors, but there's been no data, there's been no research to, to back that up, and I think that's what we'd like to see. And I, and then I think the other thing I, I would mention is the Kessler ditch rights. We, we did include in that letter on July 6th some, some questions about whether the Kessler ditch water rights did pass to the current owners of the property on, on a prior sale. I think that should be looked at, as well as understanding what the actual rights are. So, so I can tell you, in Holland Hills, if I'm not mistaken, we have rights to 10% of the water that flows by our head gate. And I can tell you in the year of the fire, a couple of years ago, the Kessler ditch company did lower down the head gate as water in the ditch fell. You know, that was, that was quite a low water year. So it helped understand, you know, how much water the, the Emma group actually has rights to, and, and how, you know, how they may be able to use that for their, their operation. So, so that, that's really it. You know, I guess the request is this, this really is an outlier zoning request, that everything in the area is residential. And so I don't think I'm necessarily opposed to a distillery, but, but I would like to see some specific assurances as to how this distillery can, can operate without impacting the neighbors. And as of yet, I, I don't think we've seen that specific plan. So that's the request.
Okay. Thank you very much, Michael, for your comments.
I'm going to go to Butch next. I've got four names that were on the line earlier.
Yeah, Butch has been there since the get-go.
So Butch, so should we go to Butch next? Butch called really early today. I don't know if you're still on there, Butch, but...
We are.
Okay, you're on the air now.
Oh, great.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, this is Butch Orbin and Lynn Orbin. We own the property at 14 Eddie Lane, which is directly next to...
The original Hogland Ranch.
The original Hogland Ranch house. Yeah. So we're going to be the most affected by this proposal, because we're about, you know, 20 feet from the parking lot in the entrance. I have a fence up, an old barnwood fence. We're opposed to it. We, we would like it to stay residential. We're really concerned about the water being drained out, since the Metro just said that the pot farm drained the two neighbors' water. We're going to be affected by the smell. There's fire hazard with producing liquor. You remember the Jack Daniels Distillery blew up two years ago?
Or so, we don't know for sure.
Or, you know, close to that. So we're very proximity to this, and, and we don't want it to go through.
And we're also wondering, when you say you're going to grow wheat, the soil isn't really conducive to wheat. I know you can change the soil, but that seems like a, a big job to change it to loamy soil, which we don't have. We have hard clay, rocky hard clay, so that's an issue. And then also, when trucks are coming in and out in the winter of our driveway of the Hogland Road, it's super steep and slippery, and even four-wheel-drive trucks slide into the highway from there. And I can't imagine a semi trying to come in and out on that entrance and exit. I mean, you'd have to chain up. And you, where are you going to pull off the road right there in 82 and chain up to try and come up and down? Because people slide in and out of there all the time. We have to put gravel down, and it's an issue. And...
The trucks would have to chain up in the middle of the highway or something to get them.
Just for the record, could we get the name of the Mrs., the, what your name is?
Lynn.
I'm Lynn Orbin.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And we also have a question about the wells, because when we purchased our property, it, it was originally 145 Hogland Ranch Road, the original Hogland Ranch property, but now they changed it due to 911 fire, we're 14 Eddie Lane officially. But we have actually a well that we purchased with our property to drill another well on our personal property. So that is a conflict. I think it definitely would be within that 600-foot radius of the wells that they're proposing if we decided to dig our own well. So that's an issue. And basically, we're just not sure a factory distilling any type of liquor is appropriate for this particular area, because it is all residential. And there's kids, and there's families, and it just seems a little out of place right here. I mean, I, I just, it just seems like not right.
And we just want to thank the board for, you know, staying in there so long.
For hearing us. I think that's all we have to say, right? We're good.
Yeah, so that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for calling in. Thank you for your patience today, too. Okay, let's start at the top of the list. Elizabeth McCracken.
I'm actually Michael Merson. I own 24 Eddie Lane, which is also part of the Holland, Hogland Ranch Historic HOA. I too have a lot of concerns about having a distillery within my neighborhood and the residential area. First, I'd like to start by saying that I, I have a, I have, I have a child, and having an alcohol-based business within 200 feet of my home is definitely an issue for me. Second, I'm having a hard time understanding this accessory to agriculture use. When the verbiage says the principal ingredient needs to be grown on the property, and there's three to four acres of land designated for growing the product, I find it hard to believe that that's enough acreage to grow the ingredients needed, especially when we've heard that more than half will be grown offsite. So my concern is that the actual verbiage doesn't support what, what's trying to be passed as a, passed or zoned. So moving on, another issue is the traffic. This section of 82 is a very dangerous section. We just had an accident down the road coming out of Holland Hills that claimed lives, and we've had accidents right down the whole area, where it is just a very dangerous section. Under the bridge, the bridge creates an ice field due to the shading right at the bottom of the hill, which is an issue. And, and I'd hate to see our road become a hazardous situation more than it already is. Looking at the plans, I'm wondering where, where are the trucks going to come in, come in and turn around? If they drive into the area, it doesn't look like there's a designated turnaround spot for semis or box trucks and the like, so where are they going to do that? Where are they going to come in, unload, turn around, and leave? So all around, I'm opposed to this project. It's, it's not, it just doesn't feel right for our neighborhood. I'm worried about our well. The well that feeds my house is the well that was part of the demonstration, or the, it's the one within 600 feet, and I'm very much concerned. It's the well that I use for drinking water and all my residential use. So yes, I'm very concerned that this well is going to go dry or have issues, because a business is allowed to disrupt my use, and that is a huge deal for me. So all around, I have a lot of concerns, and I'm hoping that the board takes all these concerns of all the neighbors surrounding this property into seriously, seriously. So it's for your time.
Okay. Michael, thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it. We'll move on to the next caller. The number ending in 8020, 618, 8020. Are you still on the line? Maybe we'll get back to her, so let's go to the number ending...
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we're here. We can hear you.
Sorry. It's so weird, because if you do it on the computer or you do it on the TV, it's actually got a delayed response from the phone, so. So you can still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. And I'm going to change rooms, because the TV is still up. So I'm just going to fly through this really quickly, because I have a bunch, but my name is Christina Helm, and I'm actually the president for Basal, for Holland Hills, for the POA. And so we are, and you've already heard a few people, but we are representing, you know, over 50 people in Holland Hills, well, 50 homes. And so one of the things I, you know, wanted to address is, yes, the water, we're very concerned. You guys have heard that, sorry, out of breath, changing rooms. But yes, we're very concerned about that, and it's not only just water runoff, it is if there is pesticides, and, you know, just having the water that's going through the soil go back to the wells. So that's a big one. And I did get to see the presentation from Luke and the silver idea, and it sounds really, really great. You know, it makes them not affect the neighborhood as much, or take the water from us, or take supplies that we need, and in return not put some bad stuff in. You know, I guess all I would ask is, how do we hold their feet to that? You know, how do you stay, you know, a net, a zero net or a silver? And, you know, if they do get to that, then how do we stay there? Because if they sell the property, I know I've got people who are concerned about, you know, the next buyer, and what are they going to do? And so these are things more for you guys, and, you know, what we do with that zone and if you change the zone. The other thing is, you know, I don't know if we can do a natural crop or something organic so we don't have to worry about pesticides, but it is something to talk to them about. The other one, and no one's brought it up yet, is the barrier, the natural barrier between the home and the site, and the fact that the other guys promised it as well, but you can see on all those maps, the trees are very bad, and it's just very thin and sparse, and with any grain blowing around, we have to worry about the neighbors' yards, and they're going to have to now maintain their yards from seed spreadage. So we just... So we just don't want to, you know, impact neighbors that way. So if we can get that under control, that would be great. And then again, I think everybody's touched on it, you know, just the fact that they are not going to be a self-sustaining agricultural use like it says. So where do you go forward? And do you throw the baby out with the bathwater where you say, okay, we're allowing this? And I'm actually thinking this is a great thing. Like, I'm not against it personally, but I have to speak for all the neighbors. And so, you know, if you go down that path and you allow that, you know, how do you be very careful and police it? I also want to give you a quick shout-out, Steve. I love you. I love the whole child family and you are just, your diplomacy, very appreciated in this.
Thank you.
And same thing, shout-out to George. George hit everything that I was concerned about and he's talked about it and it was like, oh, George, he would like say it right before I could like write the note down. So he's just like, way to go, man, he's right on top of it. So, but that would be, I think, some of the biggest things I've heard. I know I'm going to hear more from neighbors after this, but that would be the biggest ones.
Okay, thank you very much, Christina.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
You bet. Moving on to Mark Skulco.
Yes, can, hi, can you all hear me now?
Yes, we can.
So my wife and I and two children live in the property directly to the north of the proposed distillery. And, you know, we have obviously the same concerns as everyone in our neighborhood. We're concerned about our water, our well, you know, we're concerned about pesticides, we're concerned about traffic, we're concerned about them just kind of, there just seems like a lot of holes in their plan. They're not being straight up with us. What are they going to grow there? You know, how is this crop sustainable? And there's no way that three acres of wheat is going to provide enough grain for a distillery operation. So all these things are very concerning. I think that they need to come up with some more data for us to prove that this isn't going to have a negative effect on our neighborhood, especially the water. And, you know, I don't think anyone wants to be staring at a warehouse with trucks coming in and out delivering grain, which is going to be pretty necessary for them to have this operation running. And as everyone knows, just that entrance into that road is so dangerous, there isn't even a lane to get speed up. So you're going to have trucks coming in in the winter where there's a huge ice patch and cars are doing 50 miles an hour where there's nowhere for a truck to get to speed up on that highway. And as you all know, we just had a couple fatalities coming out of Holland Hills and this is in the middle of the summer where there is no snow. I have actually slid coming out of Holland Hill right into the highway in a four-wheel-drive truck. And I'm sure residents of Hogland Ranch have seen that happen as well. So, you know, just really concerned with some of the holes in their plans and just want to know more about what's going to be in that field, how they're going to manage it, how they're actually going to be running a distillery with three acres of crops. That's just not going to be possible. They're going to be shipping weed in from eastern Colorado and, you know, there's going to be a lot of trucks coming in there and it's just, it's going to be an eyesore for our neighborhood. So, you know, I'd just like to see some more data on a few things, especially the water, but, you know, just voicing my concerns as everyone in our neighborhood has. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mark, for your comments. Next, we will go to 8771, the number ending in 8771. You were unmuted now, you could talk. Are you still on the line? Let's come back to them. We'll try them again. Let's go to Dave Hotchkin.
So I think Bart is his attorney and he wants Bart to speak.
Yeah, I realize that. So Bart, Bart Johnson?
This is Bart Johnson.
Yes, go ahead, Bart.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe Dave Hotchkin is going to speak himself as well, but I represent Dave and I also represent the Roaring Fort. I think most of you know me, I'm a local land use lawyer here. I wanted to start by addressing the whole text amendment concept and it's, I'll give it kind of an A for creativity in this context, but I wanted to kind of step back and kind of really look at it for what's going on and make sure that you guys understand kind of what's happening here, but at least the way I'm looking at it. So we have this text amendment, which is, you know, creating a new defined term for an accessory agriculture use and then allowing that in the unclassified zone district through special review. I think we've already established that there's only one property zoned unclassified at this point in the entire county and it's this property. So even though this is a text amendment that applies generically in the way that all text amendments do, it's really a special deal for this property because there is no other property that could ever benefit from this. And I would submit that if this property was zoned AR-10 and we were looking at a text amendment that would allow this in the entire AR-10 zone, that it wouldn't have gotten this far. Because I think most people wouldn't be comfortable with the idea that basically a manufacturing operation can go on anywhere there's AR-10 zoning in Picking County, which is in a lot of places. And now let's look a little bit more at the details of what's happening here. An accessory use, and this is defined in your land use code, the term accessory use is defined, and it's supposed to be uses that are incidental and subordinate to the principal use of land. And they shouldn't change the character of the use of the land. In this case, what we're doing is we're pretending like the distillery is an accessory use when really it's going to become the primary use. And we're using the crop growing basically as a token, as basically tokenism to allow this accessory use, which will really be the principal use. I think it's been well-established that the crops, I think the applicant has essentially admitted it, that the crops grown on this property, though they may be in a token way incorporated into their distilling batches. And I'm thinking, you know, like you have one bushel of wheat, and by the way, I don't know how you harvest wheat in modern times without a combine and there probably isn't one within 200 miles of this valley, but that's a separate issue. I'd like to hear more about how this operation is really going to work. But anyway, so you may have one bushel of wheat harvested from this property for every, I don't know, 99 that are exported from somewhere else, probably hundreds of miles away. And so we have this kind of perverse request where you're being asked to approve an accessory use that's really a primary use and you get there through this token growing of crops. I mean, to me, if you step back and think about that, this isn't, I don't think the way the land use code should be used and I don't think you guys should be, you should think very carefully before you start opening up this kind of box because it will create a lot of other ideas about things none of us have even thought about, about how something that's accessory can really be primary through some kind of ruse, which I think is kind of what's going on here. And then in relation to that, you know, text amendments are supposed to be consistent with your master plan documents. And I think George, it may have been George that hit on this, but this property is specifically mentioned in the Down Valley Comprehensive Plan. It's on page 67 at the bottom of the page. It's referred to as the Boise Cascade Property because that's what it was back when this property, when the Down Valley Com Plan was done. And the plan says this property should not be identified within the commercial district. It should be rezoned to AR, well, to AF-1, which is now AR-10. Now, for whatever reason, and there are probably a lot of them, inertia is probably one of them, the county has never fallen through, followed through on that prescription in the Down Valley Comprehensive Plan. This property should have been AR-10 a long time ago and it's, the plan says it shouldn't be used for commercial purposes. Well, what are we talking about here? We're talking about a manufacturing facility that'll be 15,000 square feet. And by the way, that 15,000 square feet, they're basically getting credit under your non-conforming structure provisions for all the existing buildings out there, which include two barns without walls that are thousands of square feet that wouldn't even have been floor area back when they were built. But now they're considered floor area under the new code and somehow they're getting retroactive credit for that and are going to be able to replace those apparently with 15,000 square feet of commercial facilities right next to a residential neighborhood. And that's something that nobody's really focused on too much, but I think that's a really critical issue. When Luke showed the masting for those buildings, even though they were white, which makes everything look more stark, I was struck by how much commercial floor area you're going to have on this property. 15,000 square feet is a lot. And unlike a lot of the big homes on Red Mountain, which are enormous, at least those have 4,000 of it subgrade because that's what you get, you know, that type, you get to that kind of number in Picking County if it's a home. We're talking about 15,000 square feet above grade in commercial facilities that will probably have security lighting, loading ramps, things like that, that I think you really need to understand better before this gets a lot farther.
Okay, Bart, Bart, if you could wrap up your comments now?
Sure, I'm sorry I've gone on kind of long. I have two more quick comments, but actually just one because Paul, no, of course, I covered the water stuff. Hours of operation, you know, if there are going to be hours of operation on this, we think it should apply to the whole site, not just the wheat fields. You know, having 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM in wheat fields, that doesn't do much good for anybody. I guess, you know, people probably aren't doing a lot out there after dark anyway. It's really the commercial facilities that should have the hours of operation limits on them. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Bart, for your comments. Appreciate it. And let's go to Dave Hotchkin next.
Hi, this is Dave Hotchkin. I happen to own properties actually in three, all three subdivisions surrounding the property. I also own the six acres that's immediately adjacent that actually was at one time owned by Henry Buhr and High Country Tree Farms. And Henry Buhr then carved off and built in order to get permission to do my property for it to be free-market lots, he had to build 12 affordable units, which is the Hogland HOA. And as I pointed out in my correspondence before, Emma is not giving anything for its 15,000 square feet. And so, but I have three points really to go through. If you decide to move forward and approve this, there's a couple issues, one of which is landscaping. And we've tried to get Emma and staff to commit to having irrigated landscaping on Hogland Ranch Road because right now it's just, it's nothing. It's not irrigated and it looks awful. And Four Seasons promised to landscaping and they did at one point, landscape part of it, but then cut off the irrigation to it. So, but we have got a non-committal response from both the staff and Emma. And of course, I understand they're saying that they want to make that part of the site plan review process, but it's not that difficult for them to say, yes, we will give you, we don't care what it is, we just want sure it's continuously irrigated on Hogland Ranch Road frontage. And previously brought up, some of the neighbors talked about perimeter landscaping that was supposed to surround the property, which the irrigation for that was turned off years ago, too. On my property that's adjacent to it, on the Hogland six acres, I've had to turn my sprinklers around so that they irrigate landscaping that is on this site. In front of you, you see a site plan, it's on the screen and I appreciate that that being brought up. I've circled one building. If this is an accessory use to agriculture, then why do all the other buildings even be needed? Because what they say that they want to do, if you go back to the other one, what they say they want to do is manufacture their product. So all you really need is the one building, that's the distillery, and that's 5,000 square feet. And that's under the permitted 57, thank you for bringing that back, slide back, but that's 5,300 square feet. So why do they need all those other buildings? Well, we believe they're going to operate like Woody Creek and Marble Distillery and have, you know, tastings. You notice that they've even got two cottages there. Marble Distillery has its Marble Inn, which they put people up on. So my comment is, if it's really just accessory use to their crop growing, all they need is that 5,300-square-foot building on site. One other condition that I would like to ask is Emma originally came to the staff and if you look at their application, they wanted to reuse some of the buildings on site. And all the buildings, as you can see, if you've seen the site, are very dilapidated. And so we raised a concern about that. Emma then came back and said, okay, we will take off all, demolish all the existing buildings. But I point out paragraph 5C of the resolution, in that resolution, it, as the last of that sentence says, or improve their appearance and condition. So that is an opening for Emma to come back and say, well, we don't have to demolish all the buildings, we can redo some of them. And where that it becomes really important is the way that the water report is structured under the current resolution is that Emma only has to supply a water report saying that their water use is okay before they pull building permits. Well, Emma originally wanted to reuse some of the buildings and put their distillery in one of the existing buildings. So if they, so if you follow my thinking here, if they put their distillery in the existing buildings, they don't need building permits, therefore they don't need a water report as a condition. So if you follow my thinking. So I would like to request that that latter part of that sentence be removed, so they must and have to remove all existing zones on site. And I want to say one other thing about the highway. Everything seems to be, from the staff report and everything, about trip generation. Trip generation is not, is not what we're concerned about. We're concerned about big trucks being on an icy slope and having a semi trying to stop behind us and pushing us onto the highway, which all is experienced on Hogland Ranch Road because of the bridge that overhangs our intersection and creates ice. And second, we don't want to be stuck behind a truck that's trying to either turn left onto our road or turn onto the highway. There is no acceleration ramp on Hogland Ranch Road. So there are certain times of day where a truck is going to have to sit for a very long time before it can find access to the highway. So we'd like to request that if this goes forward, that only two axle vehicles be used on the site and not trucks. Long-term, I want to make one last point. Every other road along this section is, has got an acceleration lane and it's very simple to create one. And it's very simple to create one, because if you look at Holland Hills all the way to Two Rivers Road, what they've done is taking the, the side of the road and restriped it to create an acceleration lane. So we'd like to see that done for our Hogan Ranch Road to create.
Okay. Dave, you've run over your time.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
You've made some good points, and thank you very much for your comments.
Right, thanks. All right, thanks, Lynn.
And let's go to 0956, the phone number that ends in 0956. Okay, let's go to Margot Pendleton. We'll try going back to the 0956. Margot, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I didn't know I was going to be called on. I didn't know I raised my hand, but.
Well, you hadn't raised your hand. You don't need to talk if you don't want.
Well, I'm just going to make, since you called me, and I'm going to make a comment.
Okay.
I've, I've heard a lot of what's been said today. I've been listening very carefully. I am on the board of the Holland Hills Homeowners Association, along with Christina. I am just getting, I've seen this presentation probably four times now, and I, you know, there's a lot of stuff that just doesn't come out. Dave Hotchkin has made a lot of good points. The water has really got me worried, especially taking water out of Kessler Ditch, sort of hogging more water than they probably allow, allowed to. Needs to be figured out. The thought of some of my neighbors having their wells go dry is disheartening. I mean, it's, it's crazy, including the Holland Hills people and the people across Highway I guess I would implore you guys, it seems like the second round is coming up pretty soon, I would implore you guys, so let's get into this a little deeper and postpone the second reading, because, you know, this is coming up way too fast. There's a lot of research that's got to be figured out right now, and everybody's saying we don't have it, and the water issues are the biggest to me, and the traffic and the smells. It just doesn't add up. And I really am curious, again, after listening to Dave's lawyer talk about how you're arriving at this change of use, it seems to me you're stretching it quite a bit. But I would implore you to hold off on the second reading, postpone it, and get some more of this information out, especially about the water, so we're sure that if this thing does go through, we're not kicking ourselves afterward saying, oh, hell, I should have, I should have thought of this, I should have thought of that. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Margot. We'll go back to the 0956 number. Are you there right now?
That's my phone number, and I already spoke, so I'm not sure why my phone number's showing up in there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You can move on.
So I think that we have talked to everybody who is, has called in on the phone at this point. So at this point, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners. Okay, Kelly, Kelly's the first brave one.
Yeah, I mean, I don't feel brave, just because, you know, the, yeah, to me, this is pretty straightforward. I think that the application has some gaps, and I think some serious questions that need more in-depth deliberation. Already put forward kind of the water documentation requests that I have, you know, those include engineering studies related to the production of the well. I'll expand that to say confirmation of the location of the well, we're about to come into the public comment, the rights associated with the ditch, and, you know, how that usage affects the river. Also, what even the proposed water needs are for this type of use is very unclear to me. I had an outstanding question that didn't get addressed related to water about the Warrenford Fire Rescue's requirements for a, you know, incipituity, where that water gets served from, because as you know, we've seen a neighborhood that had their local water drained recently for a house fire. So I want to keep those things in mind as we move forward thoughtfully. Town of the Salt raised a question that I don't think we addressed, which was related to a study on vehicle trip travel, so I think we need to circle back on that. I'd like to reiterate Steve's request regarding the difference in uses between this and an AR10, if we would prefer to zone this to AR10. And then I'd also like staff to come back with a little more detail about, you know, how do we define what an accessory agricultural use is? You know, is a percentage the best method for doing that? Or are there other criteria that are perhaps used elsewhere that we could consider, since this would be, you know, part of the permanent code and potentially a request from a future applicant to apply to a different zone district? You know, I think we need to be more thoughtful about that. So, you know, I will leave it to Leslie and the applicant to determine if they can come up with all this information by second reading. And if not, you know, it's not out of the ordinary that we continue these discussions based on the need for more time. So, thank you.
So Kelly and I have a request for you. I need to go to the restroom. Could you chair for call the next person, and I'll be back soon? Thank you.
Yeah, happy to. I see George with his, and, go ahead, George.
Thanks. Well, I certainly share all your concerns, Kelly. To me, this is a very ambiguous application. It's an application that is being presented by someone who doesn't even own the property. So right there, it's a little speculative. There are a lot of gaps in this. Most of them are surrounding the issues around water, so we need to have that answered. It's very ambiguous in terms of, even though they've sort of given me a somewhat of a answer, what they're going to be growing, what the end product is going to be, where the additional resources are going to be coming from to produce that product. It's just a lot of ambiguity. And I, you know, the, the text amendment, this is, this is something that they proposed. It's something that, no offense to Bart Johnson, but in other cases, Bart may be coming before us with a proposed amendment, and he said, wait a second, this is a one-off. And you're looking at trying to propose something for one particular property just to meet the needs of the applicant. And I'm not sure that's our role as county commissioners representing our community to meet the needs of one particular applicant and one particular property. So I have a problem in terms of moving forward on the text amendment, and I have a problem moving it forward on the special review usage because of all those concerns.
Okay, thanks, George. It looks like John Ely wanted to weigh in on something George said. John, go ahead.
Uh-oh. Thanks, Kelly. I just wanted to point out that I, what I would recommend to the board is that this matter be continued for at least two regular meeting sessions, at least four weeks, primarily because of the, the issues that are outstanding, but also it's just unrealistic to think that Leslie can turn this thing around, given the time constraints for producing material for a package and so forth, to think that the next regular meeting would be a possibility. And my suggestion would be, if it were to be continued, that it be continued on first reading and not accepted for first reading. And the reason why I'm saying that is because of the significance of the comments that the board has made throughout the review of this project and application, as well as the scope and the content of the public comments that have been reflected by all the people calling in here today, particularly those comments made by Bart Johnson and by Paul Noto. The comments of the board and the public go to fundamental issues concerning the project and to pass it on first reading might be doing more disservice than, than, than anything else. The issues obviously relate to water, but also the underlying zone district that's in place and the scope of the language to amend the, the aspects of that underlying district. Quite frankly, based upon the comments I've heard from the board alone, let alone the public, would indicate that that code language is probably not going to be acceptable to accomplish anything close to what the board is willing to consider and probably therefore would have to go back to the P and Z for further consideration. So, so my recommendation as far as an action would be at least to continue, unless the board has other directions to give.
So I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Steve, but I was going to summarize what John Ely's recommendation was for you, Steve, and that was for us to continue on first reading to at least August 26.
To August 26th, okay.
I have a question coming.
Okay, Patty and then Greg.
Yeah, George, I was definitely going to bring up the issue of product and crop and the unknowns there, because that really makes a difference in issues, lots of issues, water use, everything. So thank you for bringing that up. As far as the language in the text amendment, it's, it's concerning, but for me, looking at other sustainable ag efforts we've done in the valley, we need something that allows us on other parcels where this sort of language could be also adopted to, if something came forward to us in the future, to allow for an expansion of sustainable ag. So there could be something more that would be an accessory use. I'm concerned about this distillery being accessory use to, to what? And so without really having the fact that the crop being grown there would have a substantial impact into the distilling process, that's a little concerning to me. So I don't want to deny this at this point. I would like to continue it to a date certain, first reading, allow public comment again, because the public comment, I think, was very beneficial today. And the 26th of August right now, sounds like a great date, but we never know what might happen between now and then with things that are going on in the world and in our little valley here, so.
Okay. Thank you, Patty. Greg?
I have to remember never to go after John Ely and Patty, because you took all the wind out of my sails. You said everything I was wanting to say, but you only said it better and more succinctly. I was focusing on the text amendment, and I just think, yeah, it's not here yet. I have a lot of problem with terms like initial agricultural product and principal ingredient. And it's clear that it's too ambiguous really to give us much guidance. So I don't see any way we would, could approve any of this today, and I would certainly opt to continue the first reading to August 26th, if I'd make a motion of that effect if it's time for that.
One second.
We have two to continue, so should we be proper in our motions?
Probably.
Doing one at a time, probably?
So Greg, just to confirm, are you moving to continue the ordinance?
I was talking about continuing the text amendment.
We need to probably continue the whole nine yards, right?
Well, yeah, everything, but in two pieces, as, as much as I can handle.
I think we should, I think we should do two motions and pass, continue both before us, the ordinance and the res.
So let's deal with the ordinance first, which is the text amendment part.
So we have a motion and a second.
Is that good for you, Greg? The text amendment part is the ordinance?
That's what I had intended, thank you.
Okay. Is there further discussion on continuing the ordinance?
I do have a comment. We did.
Patty?
Is the applicant prepared for the, I mean, we usually ask the applicant to weigh in a little bit on something as significant as continuing a first reading to four weeks, actually five weeks out?
So that question goes to Luke. Luke is the August, does the August 26th date work for you for continuing this item till then?
I believe it does, yes.
Thank you, I just wanted to confirm.
Luke, I just want to be.
But it sounds like we need extra time for this.
I just, I want to be clear that that gives you three weeks only to get material to me to turn around in the memo for the BLCC.
Because of your timeframe.
Because of my timeframe.
Sure, yes, that's understood.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? George?
Yeah, Steve, I mean, it's part of what we're looking for, and Kelly started that conversation, but I just wonder if three weeks is going to be enough to get the data that I think we're all looking for, the analysis of the, of the water from the use from the distillery to irrigation. That's the question for the applicant, is he, are they going to be able to be prepared to present all those studies and data and analysis? And/or are we going to require an independent consultant to look at that?
Oh, yes, yes.
As far as, as far as the water issues go, George, if we cannot turn it around in this office, then more than likely I'll send it out to the water engineering firm, which does work for us on a continual basis as far as engineering water projects or evaluating water rights. And they could probably look at it and, and get back to us within a one-week timeframe.
Okay.
But there's, there's always the possibility that if things don't roll efficiently and quickly on the 26th, we can continue.
Yeah, we could continue it again.
That's always, that's always an option.
So that's my thought, too, that let's set the date certain of August 26th. If for some reason, everything can't be figured out by then, and the new data brought in, at that point, we can continue it.
Staff could continue for you on your agenda.
Yeah, it wouldn't be the first time we've ever done that.
Or the last.
Or the last. Okay, all in favor of continuing the ordinance part till August 26th, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to continue a resolution granting a special review approval to Emma Fields LLC for accessory agricultural use and continuing that until August 26th.
I'll second.
Okay, Kelly seconded it. Is there any discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Any last comments from anybody regarding this, this issue right now?
I think we just moved it, so I think we're done.
So I think we're good? Okay, thank you, Leslie, thank you, Luke, and all of your team, Mary, and all of the members of the public who, who sat on their phones for a really long time. We appreciate your comments and the presentations. So we, we have one more item on our agenda, and that is open discussion. And John Peacock, I see you didn't join us in person, but on Zoom call. You're muted, John.
Sorry, I think I've got our other meeting running here, so let me just, give me just... Steve, if it, if it's all right with the board, I have one item for open discussion as well, and that's the avalanche mine issue that you are aware of.
Okay, so John, why don't you take up the alabaster mine right now?
Okay, this is an issue, commissioners, that came to us through Wilderness Workshop.
Okay, this is an issue, commissioners, that came to us through Wilderness Workshop. It was brought to my attention in-house counsel. Currently, the Avalanche Mine, some people know it as the Alabaster Mine, is in front of the Mine Land Reclamation Board. There is a hearing set in front of that board for August 19 and 20. 19 and 20 is the next two-day meeting schedule for the MLRB, and it's not known which day the actual hearing will take place on. The Avalanche Mine, over the last few years, has been producing marble and alabaster. However, you know, the background to this goes way back in time. It's more than two decades, actually. And the original beginnings of those operations were very contentious and, in fact, involved protracted litigation with the board concerning the scope of their permit and what was going to be allowed and how the extraction operations were going to be conducted. That litigation was conducted in state court primarily, but there were federal issues as well that we were involved in here. The primary concerns of the mining and extractive operations were the impacts to the sheep herd. And that's the herd that is locally resonant on the slopes of Mount Sopris that moves around and then winters near that site virtually every year. Also, the noise and traffic impacts on Highway 133, and those impacts affected the Swiss Village neighborhood, which is directly across Highway 133 from the access road, which is Avalanche Creek Road that goes up to the site. The mine was extracting material for a number of years, but has not been operating for more than 10 years now. As a consequence, the mine has the status of temporary cessation, as classified by the MLRB. The hearing that's set in August is to consider whether extending this status. There is a specific statutory guideline on this particular issue, and state statute provides that temporary cessation is a status that should only be used to a maximum of 10 years. So what I'm doing in this thing now is to check from the board as to whether the board thinks it is advisable for us to participate in that hearing, probably in just the form of a letter, although it is possible for one of the attorneys to go down and be present at the hearing in person if the board feels that's important. Basically, to object to the continuation of this temporary cessation status, given the specific statutory requirements and the fact that there is no present plan being offered by the mining operation to begin mining operations within any set period of time. If the temporary cessation status is denied by the MLRB, then the site will be required to be closed and then reclaimed. So the reclamation process would be commenced, and if not done by the operator, then the state would step in, funded through the bonding that is required from the operator when they first obtain their permit. Now, for the site to operate, they need a state permit and also a permit from us. Our permit is tied to the state as far as longevity, but we did review different concerns, primarily the two concerns that I mentioned. If the operations were closed and the site reclaimed, and then the current operator or some successor down the line wanted to resume those operations, we would then have an ability to review the proposed operations and extractive methods, in particular to the sheep herd and to the impacts in the surrounding neighborhood down there now. In addition to Swiss Village, it also impacts up-valley neighbors quite a ways, actually, because of truck traffic. So that's the issue in a nutshell, and if the board is happy with us participating in the form of a letter, we'll go ahead and prepare that, and I can bring it back to the board at a work session, the first work session in August, and you can take a look at it if you like, and then we'll send it off after that.
Okay. George?
Yeah, I strongly support that, John. I mean, it's, I guess I would make an analogy. It's sort of like us, let me contest it, the conditional water rights up the Cristo for the proposed Ozgood and Placida dams, right? So we need to be a player. We need to be a player to be able to get our points across, and we need to do whatever we can. This may be an opportunity similar to those water rights or even to our work up Thompson Abide in terms of making sure that those leases were not going to be extended. So full force ahead.
Patty?
I agree. I agree, and let's look at the letter, and then if that time we feel stronger about it or whatever, we can see if a staff member wants to go down. But if we feel the letter has enough, we might be good with that. But, yeah, I agree with George. Time has come, and they either need to get going or be done.
Kelly shaking her head, yes. Greg's giving a thumbs up. I would agree to... I mean, I would think we should write the letter, and we still could decide whether we want to send somebody in person or not. But I think sending the letter would give us standing in the issue. Is that correct, John?
Yeah.
That's correct.
So then if, for some reason, it went on further than that, we would have standing in the case and then could send somebody in person later.
Right. And depending what the MLRB decided, we may want to, you may want to take this to a higher tribunal, too.
I know that George and Patty both had to deal with this. As commissioners, I dealt with it as a board member of the Wilderness Workshop back in the day, so it's a familiar issue to all of us, and it really has a big impact on the bighorn herd there on Avalanche Creek. Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
John Peacock?
Yeah, and I shot an email out to the board, but just in case you haven't seen it, I wanted to let you know, we have been in regular conversations with CDPHE over the week, including this afternoon. That's why I left the meeting during land use. And we had a couple of points clarified. Picking County is not being asked to do a mitigation plan at this time by CDPHE. The main reason for that, or I guess two reasons for that. First, we did not fully implement the variance that was granted. We had that staged approach, and where our current public health order stands is generally as or more restrictive than the states anyway. And so the moving away from the variance wasn't going to have as big of an impact in terms of mitigation. We're also having a lot of conversations about the data dynamics as a rural resort community and our population, and how CDPHE is tracking some of the data, how we're tracking it. So there's going to be ongoing conversations. All that said, public health staff is still preparing mitigation strategies and such. We talked about some of those yesterday. That will be discussed at the Board of Health still. I just wanted to clarify for the board, because I know that's been an outstanding question. It was not clear to us until this afternoon whether we would have to submit a mitigation plan to the state and what that meant in terms of variance. And that's it? That's all I've got for you.
George?
Yeah, I've got one more that I just saw the email that was forwarded from Charlotte to John Ely. I just wonder what our role would be, that SOS, Save Our Skies, or Kill Our Economy, is looking at a valid issue on the airport expansion. So I'm not sure what our role would be in that, John. That needs to go before the clerk, I think, next week, the notification. And we, I think we have the ability to look at wording to make sure that wording is actual and factual.
You're muted.
John, you're muted.
Actually, the board doesn't really have much of a role in the generation of voter petitions. They go to the clerk for analysis and for proofing. She takes advantage of our office for assistance, and there is a process to go through with that, and it's driven towards, you know, ensuring that if something is voted in the affirmative by the electorate, it's something that can be implemented. You don't want to be in a situation where you have a voter-supported initiative or referendum that has been approved by a majority of the voters that cannot be affected for some reason. So typically, that's the process. So you won't see it come back to you other than as an informational type of petition.
So, but do you play a role in terms of making sure the wording is actually factual?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other commissioner comments? Greg?
Just that tomorrow's our Board of Health meeting. Kelly sent me questions and concerns. I often get them the night before. I know Karen would love them sooner than that, but if you have a burning question that you're afraid won't be addressed, or you'd like to throw in the hopper, please send it to me, and I'll at least bring it up in our open discussion tomorrow. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Okay. I think we're done. Would entertain a motion?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I know.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thanks, guys. See ya.
Aye, thank you.
Greg, I'll see you tomorrow.
Thanks.
Thanks, Pastor Rich.